Test, test, test.
What's that?
We're all set.
We're all set to start. Okay.
Got home from baseball and my son, my son goes, "I want some water." I goes, "Where's your water?" He goes, "I left it on the bench." So I'm like running back to the baseball field. I'm like, "I told you to go get it." He goes, "I found a baseball instead." I'm like, "Oh, my God."
We'll be starting in just a moment.
Yeah. I'm like, "I trusted you." I don't know why. "I found a baseball. I didn't need my water."
I didn't know if you were waiting for my cue, but I already turned it on. I know. We're waiting for Josh Morris.
Okay, great.
He just stepped away.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we can go. Okay. We all sat here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. So we're here for the, for public meeting of the Danvers Planning Board. Tonight, it's May the 27th, Tuesday, 7:02 PM. And so thank you all for coming. Hope you all had a good Memorial Day weekend. And so why don't we begin? Again, just to introduce myself, my name's Louis George. I'm the, I'm the chair. I'm joined here today by Gene Hartnett, our clerk, and by our member, Michael Decoulis. Jim Sears will be participating remotely this evening. And our member, Tim Spittle, will not be in attendance this evening. And we are joined by Josh Morris, Principal Planner with the town of Danvers. Okay, so why don't we, so why don't we begin, first of all? And so just for, and I noticed we do have a number of people in the audience, so I just wanted to, so, you know, please, please be seated. And just to give a rundown in terms of what we'll be, we'll be doing today, I'll be reading the, the first item on the agenda. And so then following the, following the, reading the agenda, I'll turn things over to the applicant, who will be giving a presentation. Then it'll come back to the, to the members of the board, if we have any questions or comments of the applicant. Then this is a public hearing, so we will entertain, you know, questions or comments by members of the audience. So just please make sure to, to raise your hand so you're recognized and you'll be asked to go to the podium, introduce yourself, state your address for the record, and then direct any questions you have to the chair. Okay? So why don't we, why don't we begin then? First of all, just before we start, I think we just want to do, I did introduce Jim Sears, but I just want to do a quick sound check to see if he's, to see if he can hear us and we can hear him. Jim Sears, can we hear you? Josh's, is his, is his mic muted or is it on?
No. Nope. It's on. Nope. I think.
I can't see anything wrong on my end.
Okay.
I could also potentially call him on my phone and do it like that or...
We could, yeah. So if we have a problem that way. Or you could also dial in the number as well.
I mean, I can hear you fine.
Jim Sears, can we hear you?
I can hear you fine.
We can.
He's mute. Does he know he's muted?
He's not muted.
Oh, I was looking at JM, sorry.
Yeah, I took it off.
Okay. Can you go and put it, put his, put it near the microphone? Jim, can we hear you now?
I can, I can, I can hear her. I mean...
Okay. So he's able to hear us and...
Should I call the number instead?
It might be worth trying.
Yeah, I think that would be worth trying. What's that? Yeah, if he can, if he can mute himself on the MS Teams and then call the number.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. Josh, can we begin?
What's that?
Can we begin?
Yeah, I mean, do we want to, do we want to wait for him to call in?
Yeah, I'd like to wait for him to call in, just so we can make sure that he's able to communicate.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Just trying to...
I mean, we do have a quorum, so I can, so we can proceed.
Sure.
Okay. Well, why don't we see if he'll call, okay? And then why don't we, why don't we begin with the first item on the agenda? Okay? All right, so we're here for a public hearing on 83 Elm Street and 5 Essex Street. It's a request for special permits, waivers, and site plan review, submitted by MJP Properties, Inc. and Johnson Construction Management, LLC, for properties at 83 Elm Street, map 51 lot 250, and 5 Essex Street, map 51 lot 249, pursuant to section 18.4B, quote, "Density bonus requirements," end quote. Waiver from table 18-1, section 18.5D.5A, parking reduction methods, on-street parking offset, section 18.13, design special permits, side yard setback, street-facing transparency, ground floor, and section 4, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Requests of additional waivers pursuant to 18.6E, building setback and street enclosure, figure 18, and section 18.8B10, outdoor amenity space types, 10 pocket park slash playground, table 18-9 of the zoning bylaw. Said properties are in the Danvers Town Center Core Zoning District. The applicant is proposing a redevelopment of the properties with a mixed-use building consisting of first-floor commercial space and 16 residential units on the upper floors and associated site modifications. And so I do have, be ready to turn things over to the applicant. I do have just a, just a, just a quick preliminary, because we do have a member who's participating remotely. Any votes we'll have to take will be by, will need to be done by roll call vote. And also, I did want to just make a note to the applicant, as you're aware, we do have, we are down one member this evening. And then finally, I just wanted to make one note, just really, just at the, at the outset. It's just, just out of full transparency. I happen to be a patient of the Danvers Dental Practice. I see no real or perceived conflict here. I can act in a fair and unbiased manner, but just want to put that out there, just out of full transparency. Okay? So turn things over to Attorney McCann.
All right.
Yes. Jim can hear.
Can Jim hear? Okay.
Is this microphone on?
Can, can Jim? Yeah, can, can we just get confirmation that Jim can hear the presentation?
Yes.
And can you hear me with this microphone? Yeah? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, yeah. Jim Sears.
Is now joining.
Okay. There's technology. Excellent.
Now, next one. Now, next one. Now, next one. Now, next one. Now, next one.
Okay. Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And with me tonight, I have a number of members of our team that I'd like to introduce. And then, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is give a brief overview of the project, then turn the microphone over to our project engineer, who will walk everyone through the plans. Our project architect as well will make a full presentation. Then we'll come back and I'll go through the zoning requirements that we have. And then, of course, we'll be ready to answer any questions that you may have. So first with me tonight, we have remotely, because he recently had surgery, is Rob Johnson with Johnson Construction Management, LLC, one of the applicants. The Johnson Construction Management, LLC is a development company out of Stonem, with many years of experience with mixed-use developments, focusing on, on residential mixed-use and multifamily. Also with me tonight is Mike Panzaro, Danvers developer with MJP Properties, Inc. Those are the two applicants. With me tonight, from our technical team, is Eric Zachrisson, who is the project architect, and Giovanni Fodero, who is the project engineer with Fodero Engineering from Danvers. We also have a landscape architect on this project, Owen Wallenberg from MDLA Registered Landscape Architects. He is not here this evening, but his presentation will be made by our project architect. He is not here this evening, but his presentation will be made by our project architect. The applicants have a vision and for their business with regard to a creation of sustainable living and livable space that enhances the quality of life for the residents and contributes positively to the community. So, that's been the, the foundation for this, for this project. And Josh, if you could put up slide number two, just to focus everyone. This property is a combined development area of 83 Elm Street and 5 Essex Street in Danvers. Total lot area is about 24,869 square feet, with frontage on Elm Street as well as on Essex Street. If I could have slide number two, the existing condition slide. The 83 Elm Street is a single-story commercial building. Next slide, please. Built circa 1950. Again, it's a single-story building, it has commercial space with a dental office, as well as vacant space now, had been a bank use on the property previously, but it is, once again, it's vacant. 5 Essex Street is a commercial parking lot that has no particular screenage along Essex Street. The zoning district, as the board knows, is part of the Character-Based Zoning District, which is relatively new districts, combination of districts for the downtown area. This property is located in the Character-Based Zoning District, as well as specifically in the DTC Core Zoning District, which encourages housing production for a variety of household types. Also encourages business development, housing production and attractive pedestrian areas and environments, as well as open spaces. And encourages mixed-use, which is commercial on the first floor and residential above. That is a specific building type and design type that the zoning district defines, again, as commercial on the first floor and residential above. This project began development last summer. And through the development and design team's efforts, we've come up with what we think is, and certainly, a lot of meetings with planning staff and among the, the design team, we're pleased to present this project tonight that we think is very well thought out and is consistent with the intent and purposes of the Character-Based Zoning District and the DTC Core. As a general overview of the project, and you'll see all of the plans, the site plans, as well as the architectural plans, but I'll just give you a general overview. We have a resi, a commercial component for use on the first floor, and then, two upper floors, which will have residential use. The existing dental practice will remain at the site. It will be enlarged slightly, but it will continue to serve the Danvers community. We will also have a remaining portion of the first-floor building, which will provide some additional commercial space in the area where the, the bank space was before. That's about 2,700 square feet. The first floor will be expanded a bit to provide some of the amenity services for the residential uses above, which will include the lobby entrance, some amenity space, bike storage, mailroom, et cetera. And you'll see those on the floor plan as we proceed forward with the presentation. The second and third floors will have residential use. The second floor will have eight residential units. And the third floor will have eight residential units, for a total of 16 residential units. The units will raise, range in size from about 1,200 square feet to 1,390 square feet.
I'm sorry, can you repeat again?
Yes. The units will range in size from about 1,200 square feet to 1,390 square feet, 1,390 square feet. All of the units will be three-bedroom units. It's somewhat unique in the downtown area, providing much-needed family housing in the downtown. Again, meeting the purpose of the DTC Core, which is to provide a variety of different housing types to meet the needs of different household configurations within the downtown area. The submission package, just for the record, so we get this onto the, the record, the submission package that we've presented and filed with the town includes the special permit application form, the site plan approval application form, the filing fee, which was approximately $5,000, the project narrative, which is detailed overview of the project, the Form W, a full stormwater report, civil engineering site plan drawings, architectural plan set, photometric plan and lighting cut sheets, the landscaping plan, as well as colored renderings. That entire package has been put together. It was reviewed with planning staff prior to submission and has gone through quite a thorough review at the municipal level. On sheet three of the architectural plan sheet is, plan set is actually a blow-up of the zoning compliance chart, so that that's very apparent. There are lots of zoning requirements within the DTC Core and the Character-Based Zoning Districts that the applicant's team has really studied and, and been as compliant as possible with regard to the site constraints for this particular, for particular project. And the project has been designed to be substantially in compliance with the requirements, subject to several waivers that have been requested. I will note a couple of items, that within the DTC Core Zoning District, this building is permitted a 10,000-square-foot footprint. The proposed footprint is 8,302. So, the footprint proposed is smaller than what is permitted within this zoning district by right. The building height permitted in this zoning district by right is four stories. This building proposed is three stories. We are providing as required open amenity space for this project. The requirement for the open amenity space for this project is 15% of the development area. We are providing an open amenity space of 31.6%. So, our open amenity space is double the required open amenity space for the zoning district. And that consists of a pocket park playground, unit decks, as well as a roof deck for the residents. Parking is provided, both on-site, as well as there is parking along the street frontage. And we'll go into more detail about that, but the 16 residential units require 24 residential parking spaces. The commercial space requires 16 commercial parking spaces, for a total of 40 required parking spaces for this project. We have on-site 41 parking spaces. However, some of those spaces are tandem. And because they are tandem, they cannot be used for, to meet the commercial requirement. So, we have the required number of parking spaces on-site, but because we have more tandem spaces, we have, 28 of our spaces are tandem. We are requesting a special permit to allow us to count, not reserve, but to count three spaces along the street frontage on Elm Street. And I believe we have not, there are currently nine spaces along the frontages of, of this property on Elm and Essex. We're asking for a special permit to count, again, not reserve, but count three spaces along Elm Street for the commercial use. And I will note that there is a large public parking lot within 500 feet of this particular project. The design of the parking provides partial, partially-covered spaces, which is a, which is a desirable amenity. We have garage doors and landscaping that will transform the existing open parking lot into a very attractive area where the, the parking of vehicles is actually blocked from view. And that's not something that we have now. Right now, you see an unbuffered open parking, commercial parking lot. We have a landscaping plan that is really very lush and, and robust with a large selection of native plantings, trees, shrubs, ornamental grasses. And we also have landscaping provided on the roof decks through planters and other landscaping elements. So, that is just a basic overview of this mixed-use development, commercial use on the first floor, 16 residential uses above. And to get you into the details of this, I will turn this over to Giovanni Federo, to walk you through the engineering plans.
Thank you, Nancy. My name is Giovanni Federa. I'm with Federa Engineering, based in Danvers, Mass, local company. We do land surveying and civil engineering. To start off with the existing conditions, site conditions, it's two parcels located at 83 Elm Street and 5 Essex Street. It's just north of the Elm and Essex Street intersection and lies within the Danvers Town Center Core Zoning District. It currently includes a single-story commercial building with a rear parking lot, as you can see here on the site, existing condition site plan. There are currently four on-street parking spaces along Elm Street, and also four on-street parking spaces along Essex Street.
Excuse me, can you tell me what page you're on, here in the, in the plans?
This is sheet...
My eyes aren't that good.
C2.
Thank you.
Yes. The site is generally flat, with the low point in the parking lot where it collects stormwater, and it directs to the municipal drainage system. The surrounding properties include a mix of residential and commercial uses, consistent with downtown Danvers. Proposed conditions for the proposal includes adding two residential stories above the existing building, while maintaining the ground-floor commercial space with a little, with a little bit of an expansion. We can go to sheet, C3, I believe, sorry. So, this, yeah, this is a good spot, right here. The parking lot will be fully reconstructed, incorporate a landscaping and recreational areas around the building and the parking lot. The plan includes 41 on-street parking spaces, along with 20 bicycle parking. And on-street parking spaces will, will remain unchanged on Elm Street, so will remain at four on-street parking spaces on Elm Street. And it will increase on Essex Street from four to five on-street parking spaces. Snow storage will be within the, it'll, it'll maintain on-site and will be within the open recreational space, specifically in the seeded patio areas when they will not be used during the winter months. And it'll keep a main, you know, it'll maintain a nice clear path for the walkway.
Can you point to that on the, on the map?
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry. You can go to the landscaping plan, sorry.
Yeah, since you're...
I know, I'm kind of...
Since you're right there, it would be good if...
I think I might go back.
Josh, number seven.
Yeah, sorry. Right here, so, as you can see, there are patio seeded areas right over here, patio seeded areas right here. This will help maintain snow storage for the walkway that's leading to the rear and to the, connecting to the front. And potentially maybe use a little space of the playground area, especially while not being used in the winter months. That would be, you know, sufficient for storm, for snow storage, so... As for stormwater management, there will be a subsurface infiltration system that will be, we can skip pages, I'm sorry. If we go to page sheet C4, right here. So, this is the site plan with utilities. So, there will be a subsurface infiltration system that'll be beneath the parking lot, will be located right here, that rectangular area. And that will capture and infiltrate runoff with an emergency overflow connecting to the municipal drainage system. Stormwater system has been designed to be in full compliance with Massachusetts stormwater standards. And all utility connections to the building will be upgraded as necessary to support the expanded building use. And I'm going to hand it over to the architect, Eric Zachrisson.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we go back a slide or two, to the other site plan?
I know, Mr. Fedora, I mentioned your name. Could you mind just repeating your name for the, for the record?
My name is Eric Zachrisson, I'm an, I'm the architect for the project. My firm is Context. And we are based out of Boston and Charlestown. Next slide, please.
Which way?
Hmm?
Which way?
Like... Oh, I'm sorry, keep going to higher numbers, so down the slide. Okay, let's, let's stop, one, go up one more. One, no. Here. So, I want to start with kind of orienting people, because I think if you're not used to looking at plans, some of this might be a little bit confusing. So, the existing commercial here in gray, Elm Street, Essex Street. And this is where we would have the two entrances for the residential, both the car parking and bike parking here, as well as the residential entry here. So, in effect, the, the residence is going to be entered off of Essex Street. The commercial spaces will be entered off of Elm Street. Once the, a pedestrian or guest enters the building, there's a lobby here and a little bit of amenity space at the back of, of that kind of white zone here. That's our, that's our lobby. The parking, you would enter, we have a 20-foot-wide curb cut here to have both entrance and exit next to each other. That actually gives us one extra surface, one extra street parking space, which is one of the advantages, but also organizes traffic to be in a kind of narrower zone so that pedestrians have one, one less curb cut to kind of navigate. As you enter into the car parking, we've got 13 full-sized commercial, 13 full-size spaces for the commercial use. Behind that, we have the 28 residential spaces, which are going to be in, or arranged in a tandem fashion. What's probably the most confusing about this is the building covers about half of the parking lot. So, this front portion here has about a little over 5,000 square feet of covered parking. And then, in the rear here, we have 5,000 square feet of surface parking, which would be fairly typical, except for the fact that we're going to surround the whole thing with a privacy fence, a six-foot-tall privacy fence. So, we have a surface parking lot, efficient surface parking lot here in the rear, but it is separated from our green space. It is separated from our neighbors by a six-foot-tall privacy fence. Next slide. Either direction. Okay, so, and I wanted to kind of highlight this, because if you were to cut a section through the building, you would see the existing commercial is this zone over here. We're going to build the new building over the roof of the existing building, because we want to try and keep the dentist office operational throughout the entire process. So, that, that gives us a very tall first floor here. And then, we're going to have the parking here in the rear, at this zone, and then the lobby in the middle. And up above that, two stories of residential units. So, that's just cutting right through here, so that you can see the relationship of the commercial space, the lobby space, the parking, and then the two levels of residential are flat above that. Next slide. So, this is our, our typical floor. Level two and three are more or less the same, except for some of the impacts of the aesthetic of the, the mansard roof that I'll get into in a minute. But, as Nancy had mentioned, these are 1,190 or, 1,100 and 90 square feet to 3,000, 1,300 square foot, three-bed, two-bath units. Each of the units has an outdoor space. Each of the units has a primary suite with a walk-in closet with a en suite bathroom, and then a second bathroom, which would be used, obviously, by the other two bedrooms, the kitchen, the living room, which are in, in all cases, the kitchen and living room are arranged around the, the decks. Along the street faces, we've inset those decks, so they're not hanging out on the sidewalk. They're, they're meant to be kind of a space that both brings light into the unit, but also, and gives them a little bit of private outdoor space, in addition to the other outdoor spaces they have, but brings some light into the unit. And then, also, it is, is private from the street. We don't want people to have to go out there and now, and kind of navigate the street or be inundated by the sounds of the street. On the rear, the decks are a little bit more pronounced. And that's just because we, we didn't need to bring them in. We wanted, we didn't actually want them to be too dark, and so we, we pulled those two out a little bit. Next slide. So, as I said, the third floor looks very much like the floor below it. You're going to see the same, the same layouts. The only difference is that some of these... decks are a little bit impinged by the mansard, but I think that's going to be a real feature when you're up there, it's, it's going to give you a sense of where you are in place. Next slide. And then on the very top of the building, we're going to have a 1,500-square-foot roof deck, common to the building for these 16 residences. There will be probably a couple of organized areas, what we're showing right now is planters on two sides to kind of also give it a sense of privacy. We're keeping it very far off of the walls so that it also kind of feels secluded and huddled in the middle, and also obviously accesses the two staircases in the elevator and a single unisex toilet up there as well to make sure that people can enjoy the space up there. So pretty simple, but a little small, like I said, 1,500 square feet, just barely bigger than the units. It's not, it's not a huge roof deck, it's, it's meant to be large enough that two or three groups could be up here and not have to be on top of each other and be a little bit organized into different spaces. Next slide. Can we go back to the landscape quickly, go back up the other direction of the landscape before we move off of the plans? So the way that the landscape in particular, this zone right here is organized, and as Nancy mentioned, this is about 4,700 square feet of green space back here. We're showing a play area, and that's because we intend for this to be a family zone. So we, there's a play structure, legitimate play structure with legitimate built-out play area over mulch, and a seating area adjacent to that for parents to sit and watch and hopefully have that communal space that as a parent we all enjoy and get to know our other friends who are, who have kids. Next to that, there's a large green zone, and then a second seating area back here, which would be previous pavers, meant to be able to be, as Gio mentioned, it would, it would be our, where we would store snow during the winter, but during the summer it would be that other space that's on the ground in addition to the space that's up on the roof deck. We've made a, taken a lot of care to make sure that this is a lot of green space up against our neighbor and buffering for both us and our neighbor.
Just a clarifying question, that's all 4,700 square feet you said for the combined space?
That's this zone here, yes. That does not include the decks on the, on each, on the second floor and on the third floor. We provide about 830 square feet of decks on each floor as well as the 1,500 square feet on the top. That's how we, when you combine all of those together, that's how we get to the 31% of our site is covered by, is, is outdoor recreational space. With that, let's go back down, past the plans, past this, past this, past this. Okay, so go back to, yeah, so we looked at, the other thing is this character-based zoning, and we want to make sure that we were thinking about kind of how this is both the end, because it is kind of the last building in this particular DTC zoning, how it is to be a commercial, a mixed-use commercial building in this idealized zoning. So we looked at some older photos of, of Danvers, some of, that are kind of on the city's website and in other historic places, next slide. And you see, it's often, there's, there's always been a kind of ornamental nature to the, the older buildings, and next slide. Even kind of this one, which I love, is, it's pristine in its kind of jewel-like quality, it's got a ton of detail in, in every direction.
Where is that building near?
I don't think it's standing anymore, it's on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's on the historic, it's on the cover of the historic, historic Danvers website. And so I looked, I tried to look up the address, but I'm not exactly sure where, where it was. Next slide.
That used to be a pharmacy.
Used to be a pharmacy?
Okay. Thank you.
So a lot of the current commercial buildings have a, have a certain amount of character and quite a bit of detail into them, and so wanted to respect that as we try and figure out, like what is the character of the, the future of downtown Danvers. So next slide also shows a couple of buildings that, I love the, the mix of uses that exists kind of in, in the core, and it's, it's a, it's a classic, classic mix. And then the next slide, I think, shows some of what's going on right now, and it's, this is a portion of High Street, which is not far from our building, and how do we, how do we build on something that is kind of a little bit empty like this? So next slide. So I want to show you black and white elevations, which is not the greatest way to really appreciate how, the impact of a building, but I wanted to start with kind of how we've looked at this from a detailed standpoint. First, this is the Essex Street elevation, and then I'm going to dwell on the Elm Street elevation a little bit, but right here you see, this is the existing dentist's office. And you'll notice we're leaving the windows where they are. The idea is, is that we're trying to keep that space in place. There are a couple other utility windows that we actually can't, utilities and doors we can't close, but how do we make this first floor feel like it is something that is cohesive all the way to the garage doors and a couple of translucent windows that would be into parking, but make this feel like a live and active space all along Essex? And then how do we make two stories of residential above that feel both part of the, the whole mix and at the same time be something that is unique? So this is what we are kind of sketching on Essex, and then I want to flip to the next slide where I can, where we'll see Elm Street here. Again, this is the dentist's office, and then this is the current, the space that was previously a Bank of America. We, so in this zone here, we are not adjusting the windows, we're, we're kind of building around the window structure that exists and the number of openings, and we're using that to somewhat replace the window structure that is right now kind of a strip retail feel that the bank has. And so we're actually, one of the things that Nancy mentioned is we're reducing the number of windows or the amount of glazing on this space in order to make it feel consistent across the board. And then above that, we have a kind of very classic detailed signage band separating the, the commercial space down below with the residential space up above. And up above, we're going to use clapboard-type siding, seven-inch, eight, or nine-inch hardy board siding to give you that very, very horizontal feel. And on the individual bays in between these recessed decks, we're going to do a mansard roof on the, on the ends, but leave the center, the corner piece as that classic commercial feel of a block building that sits in the, in the, in the corner. So again, this is the, the entrance or the, the address of the dentist's office, and we've kind of tried to work from that to create something that feels both classic and, and expresses a larger, bigger use. Here you see the rear elevation, one of the main things I want to point out here is that's the privacy fence that you'd be seeing. Instead of seeing a surface lot of parking, you'd see this six-foot-tall privacy fence, you'd see some of the open-air parking above that, you'd see the amenity. Again, if you happen to be able to get back there into somebody else's backyard, but we want to make sure that we're showing that we're not drawing a front facade and you're going to get a box in the back. This is something that we're going to wrap this, this kind of language all the way around the entire perimeter, because no matter where you are in that area, you don't want to see the back of this building, you want to see the, something that's been treated with love and as a front. So next slide. So this is a rendering that we had, it's a little bit older, a little bit older in that we're, we're kind of exploring some different color schemes, but basically along here you see that Essex elevation, you see the residential entrance, you see the dentist's office, you see the other portion of the dentist's office and the bank, former bank here, as well as the residential zones with these residential on level two, the mansard expression on the ends, and that, that block volume that says, you know, this is the important intersection, this is where the, these two streets meet. Next slide. So does this not have the color options?
You do, Josh, could you pull up the email that has the color, the color option on it?
Just because I know that was something that people had asked for, and I'd love to kind of also show. As much as, yeah, thank you.
Do you want to talk about the top picture first, or that'd be helpful, or the bottom, the second?
Let's go to the second one. Yeah, because that's similar, but here you get to see how we are exploring, there was some concern about the building maybe feeling too serious, too drab, and so I'm going to step over here because I think I'm standing in a handful of people's way. I want to make, we're still, we're looking at something that might have a dark base and a lighter upper levels. In this case, we're showing the mansard as another color option. Do you have a, the other slot, the other color options on this email as well?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Apologies for that, we have, we actually, this was the first of three color studies that we were doing in the, in the last presentation, but suffice to say, color is something that we're still working on. A lot of these things, we are here to receive the feedback on, but we, we are still trying to make this feel like a, very much like a downtown mixed-use building that is going to kind of make this intersection feel prominent and important and well-loved. So with that, without the color options, I, I have additional slides like this that I can talk to, open space or, or other questions, but I think we were going to hand this back to Nancy to talk about zoning.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric, that was, that was a really, I think, comprehensive presentation both by Giovanni and by Eric. The development team has been working on this plan for a long time, but it's a little complicated if you're seeing it for the first time tonight, so I think Eric's explanation was really good as to the design of the building, because it is a little different in that we have that garage feature where we have covered parking and garage doors and that enter in and then open-air parking in the back. When you just look at the plan, that doesn't really pop out to you right away that that's what's happening. So it's, again, it's a project that we think has reflected the intent of the character-based zoning in the DTC core, and we've worked within the regulations as best as we can, and we do have some special permit requests, which are just that, special permits in that the bylaw permits us to request for certain things and gives the criteria that we have to meet in order to get those special permits. So we have a few of those, and then we just have a couple of waivers where we've asked for certain design elements that are provided in the bylaw, which as this board knows, the downtown character-based zoning districts are extremely detailed and, and technical, and sometimes when you get that level of technicality and then you try to apply it to particular lots, waivers are needed to make the, the project flow in an acceptable way to then meet the other intents of the bylaw. So the zoning approval or relief requirements that we are seeking first is a special permit and waiver for the, for the density. We are requesting 16 residential units for this site, again, eight units on each floor. We have the required parking, both for the residential's use as well as for the, the commercial spaces onsite. We have truly an excessive amount of residential parking, and the open amenity space, we have more than double the required open amenity space, 15% being required, and we have 31.9% open amenity space. So we think the, the density that we're requesting is, is appropriate for this location. We are seeking a special permit to allow us to count three of the frontage parking spaces toward that commercial space count. And again, that's required only because we have tandem spaces within the layout of the design, and, and part of that is dictated by the, the, this board doesn't typically deal with irregularly shaped lots, but we have an irregularly shaped development area here that we are working with. We are also requesting a special permit to allow ground floor transparency of 16% on Elm Street and 27% on Essex Street, where 60% is required. And we're noting that the first floor is primarily a dentist's office. So having 60% window space on a dental office is really, is it inappropriate? Yeah, I'll say it's inappropriate, you don't want people walking by looking in at you when you're getting your teeth filled. So as Eric explained, we're maintaining the historic windows of the first floor for the dental office that's going to remain. And then he has continued that element on to the, the retail space at the other end of the building. So we think it's a reasonable, not only a reasonable request, but also a reasonable ask given the, the types of uses that are, that are proposed here. And the existing ground floor transparency, by the way, does not meet the requirements of, of the district anyway, so we're actually improving some of that situation. We are requesting a special permit to allow the side yard setback of six feet where 15 is required. The existing building is zero setback, so the new additional section is six feet off of the lot line, but that stepped back from where the existing building is, which is zero, it's on the lot line. And then we are requesting a, to make sure I get all of these with, the next one, that's it for the special permits, and then waiver, we are requesting a waiver of 10 inches on the height without a step back. So we are at 35 feet, 10 inches on the height of the building, and the bylaw has a requirement of 35 feet above that you have to step back, and we're only above by 10 inches. And the reason we're above the 35 feet by 10 inches is that we're maintaining, as Eric said, the existing commercial space, which is already, it's higher than a standard commercial space. We want to maintain the dental office and the dental office used throughout the construction, so that dictates our height because it's a little bit higher, and so we're asking for a waiver of 10 inches on that height. And then the last waiver we're requesting is to allow 13 trees within the playground and pocket park area where 23 trees would be required for a general pocket park area, but again, we think this is reasonable in this case because we have playground equipment and seating areas. So adding more trees would, would limit the amount of playground area that we can have, and given the residential use here with three-bedroom units, these are going to be family units, it's more important to have a good area for playground rather than adding some more trees in that section. Again, we're having completely enclosed areas and lots of buffering anyway. So that's our waiver, our waiver list, it's really very, very minor for a project of this, of this site.
Turner, can you just a real, just clarifying question, just in terms of the waiver, in terms of, because I know it's special permit you're seeking in terms of number of units, but you're also seeking a waiver too, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a special permit and then a waiver above.
Okay, understood.
The, and you have seen that type of request and granted that type of request both on 17 Elm as well as Danvers Hardwood Project, they're both very similar. In order to support our special permit request, we do have to provide a, a public benefit improvement, an eligible public benefit improvement, and those are outlined within the zoning district, zoning bylaw as to what an eligible public benefit improvement is, and we are satisfying that by providing an, one additional affordable housing unit. So this project with 16 units, again, they're all three-bedroom units, would under the bylaw require two affordable housing units. The applicant in support of the special permit request is adding to that a whole additional unit, so that this project will bring three three-bedroom family affordable housing units to the downtown area. That's a very significant public benefit improvement, often for projects we see adding a bench or adding a tree or anything, we're adding and bringing to the downtown area a whole additional three-bedroom We're adding and bringing to the downtown area a whole additional three-bedroom housing affordable unit. Special permit criteria is outlined in the bylaw, in, sorry, in my application. Project narrative, I have outlined the special permit criteria. For the record, I will, I'll just list those off, that the project meets all of the special permit criteria under Section 18. The project is consistent with the purpose of Section 18 in general by proposing a Danvers Square redevelopment with a permitted mixed-use development with a commercial first floor, residential above, onsite residential and commercial parking, and abundant outdoor amenity space. The second criteria, as provided in this application and the presentation and the plan submitted, the project is consistent with this special permit eligibility requirements. Number three, the social, economic, and community needs are served by the project, which provides active first-floor commercial space, retention of an existing commercial business that's been serving the Danvers community for many years, and expanding housing choices by providing three-bedroom units. We have adequate safety for traffic flow, access parking is all provided, adequate utilities and public services are provided. We have positive impacts on pedestrian comfort and safety are provided with screened parking. The screened parking areas, as I indicated before, and you saw pictures of the existing commercial parking spaces wide open, no buffering at all from the sidewalks. Fiscal impact, including impacts on municipal services, tax base and employment are positive. The business space available provides additional tax revenue as well as employment options. The existing commercial office is being retained and expanded, and the commercial units will add significantly to the existing tax revenue from this property. And finally, and most importantly, this project as designed will not result in substantial detriment to the character-based zoning district or surrounding neighborhoods. In fact, this development will provide revitalization to the area, new housing units that are modest in size but accommodate family housing with three bedrooms, an attractive building with open amenity rooftop space and employment opportunities, all of which enhance the fabric of this neighborhood. Site plan approval is required as a separate item. It's a separate application heard together as this entire presentation. And the development plan consisting of the architectural plans, stormwater management report, and the, the engineering civil plans, all comply with the requirements of Section 4 of the zoning bylaw for site plan review as well as Section 4 of the zoning regulations, with the exception of the minor waivers that we've requested. Affordable housing criteria for this project, again, two affordable housing units are required, to meet Section 29 of the zoning bylaw. And we are providing three, three-bedroom affordable housing units. Transportation mitigation fee, always my favorite to talk about. This project will generate a transportation mitigation fee of almost $80,000 that will be paid by, by the developer applicant, $78,627. That's based on square footage. And that will go into the transportation fund that the town maintains for improvements to the downtown area. However, that, that is deemed fit by planning staff and others who make those decisions with regard to that, that fund. In addition, the water use mitigation fee will be determined by the water department, and that will be an additional fee associated with this project. Finally, this is a mixed-use development, residential on the upper floors, commercial on the first floor, which is exactly what the character-based zoning and the DTC core intended. The applicant submits that this project has been thoughtfully and thoroughly designed to meet the intent and purpose and requirements of the CBZD as well as the DTC core to bring an attractive redevelopment to Danvers, which will provide three-bedroom residential units, maintain a longstanding dental office, and provide a new commercial opportunity for, within the vacant commercial space, and provides more than twice the required outdoor amenity space. Thank you for allowing us to make this full presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the presentation, Attorney McCann. We'll go to the members of the board with any questions that they may have. I'll start things over with Jean.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So I love the additional affordable unit. That, that's always great for us to not even have to ask you for that. It's always on our list of things we'd like to see. I think another one of our asks would be to repave both of the sidewalks on Essex Street and Elm Street. I don't think that was proposed.
That is not part of our proposal.
Okay. So take that into consideration. I do like that it's only two residential stories, or a total of three, rather than the four, keeping it a little bit more of a scaled-back feeling. I had a couple of questions on the parking. So there are 28 tandem spots, that's correct, and there are 16 units. So does that give 14 of the units two tandem spots? And then the other two units would be just one spot on the, the full parking that's covered? Or where are those other two units going to be parking?
So, yes, the, the intention is that you would have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 tandem spaces. We could, in theory, sell them two per unit up and down. And then either one of the units ends up being out here or that four of the spaces are split between two or three units.
Because can't we not split tandem spaces between units, right?
We typically don't. And for the most part, we wanted to adhere to that. But we also didn't want to put 32 parking spaces on here, so there'd be two per, two per unit.
Okay.
Do you mind speaking into the microphone just so people can, at home can hear?
The required parking spaces is 1.5 spaces per unit. So with 16 units, that comes up to 24. So some units will have two, and some units may only have one space.
But if you can't split two tandems that are back-to-back, then how, how does each unit have at least one parking spot if there are only technically 14 double spaces?
So, sorry, some, some of these 13 spaces.
Okay, that was my question.
Because of, because of that, some of those can be assigned to the residential as well. We have 41 spaces. We're only required 41.
Okay, thank you. And then some of the parking along Essex Street, it looks like there are only two that are listed as existing. Is there more than that currently? It's just not marked?
So currently, there are four.
Okay.
But because the current curb, there are two current curb cuts. It's space, curb cut space, curb, curb cut space, space. Two of them are existing. Some others are moved. In the end, we end up with five instead of the four that exist today.
Okay, so you don't need to count all of the street spaces towards the commercial parking?
No, just three of them.
And then I had a question on the landscaping. So since you are under on the trees, would it be possible to substitute out some of the shrubs or other plantings for trees along the border?
We could. As you can see, there's a long stretch here of, of tree space. We're currently feel like the 13 is really a good number for this. If we were to try and put 20 in that, that stretch, they might all be much smaller trees or they might not be as kind of bigger conventional. But right now, we're stretching it along here. We could bring it all the way down here if we had to. That's why we went for the waiver, because we felt like this is a good amount of trees. It's not exactly what, what's required, but it, within that zone. We could also eliminate some of the other amenity space if we had to and just put more trees out here.
Okay.
But right now, this felt like the balance that was appropriate.
Okay, I'm okay with that. And then my other question was on the turf. Can you explain what that's for? I don't really love seeing turf.
It's just this zone here.
Yeah.
It's partly because we don't feel like putting natural grass out here is going to be a great use of that space. We imagine an amenity in here that is probably a health club or something to that effect. The pinch point here, this is only a six-foot zone. This is a 12-foot zone. It's not going to be a great space out there, but we felt like it should at least look like something green. Now, back here where we have an even narrower zone, we're using a ornamental stone, crushed gravel or something to that effect. It felt a little harsh to put that here where, because imagine bringing a mower back here or bringing it through the space. We felt like probably better to just do something green and, and quiet that doesn't require a lot of maintenance.
Is that going to be like open, is there a door out?
There is a door. There's a door here, and there's a gate here. And you could come around either way and be in it. We don't imagine people are going to use it for anything. We had, we had at one point talked about putting a dog run out there, but right now, it's just, it's a green space in front of the.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't really anticipate people using it, I'd rather see some sort of low-maintenance ground cover or even pavers just because the turf, like, it tends to degrade and then, you know, like shed plastic, so.
That's an easy change. We're sure we're amenable to it.
Those, yeah, I think that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Mike?
Thank you, and I echo Jean's comments about the affordable unit, so thank you as well. That area we're just talking about, just follow up on that while we're talking about it. Did the town have any, is that the electrical room? Is that for like transformers? Or is that, like, what's exactly in there? Does the town have any issue? Do they need access to that all, or is that for building only? Or it just feels like it's very limited back there for access?
Not sure referring to Mike.
The electrical room that's right off of that, yeah, it's right where he's pointing. Yeah, exactly.
It's part of the building.
So they can get to that. You said it was pretty tight back there, so they're.
There's a three-foot walkway around here. You could also come through the building if you needed to.
There's no access through the building, right?
Through the existing commercial space.
Oh.
There could be.
Okay. So that was one thing I just quickly had. And then I, just because we're talking about the special permits and stuff, I have a, I'm okay with a few of the things you talked about. The, the transparency thing, to me, it feels extremely heavy personally, so I don't know. I guess that's just a generic comment. When you look at the rendering, I feel like it's extremely heavy on the bottom with those. And Attorney McCann, you mentioned a comment where you said it was improving the situation that's there now. But I can't imagine that's the case if there's, the Bank of America building has storefront curtain wall across that whole frontage. So is that an accurate statement or is it?
So I, the, the transparency is being reduced. We, we talked about that. So we're not increasing, we're definitely decreasing it. And we're decreasing it so that this is consistent with the, the dental office.
I totally understand the consistency. I think, and obviously, as we mentioned, the dental office has been there for quite some time. I don't know when. I don't know if anyone knows off the top of their head. But we're designing for an office that is, may not always be there. We never know, I guess. And so I'm a little concerned with how heavy, I mean, this rendering you're looking at that you guys had up here, the base of the building looks extremely heavy. I think the dark colors obviously don't help it. But I think the transparency issue is a little concerning on my end. And then I think you guys used, it looks like glass garage doors, which I think probably increased your transparency.
Translucency doors, yes.
Yeah, which is another thing I just, I don't know, it doesn't seem like the right fit for this neighborhood. And I know you talked about the context of the area and stuff, and I don't know that this is a planning board thing, but was there somewhere that the mansard roof was derived from? I mean, I live right on this street and it just seems a little out of.
We did see a lot of sloped roofs and we saw a lot of shingles. And so we, we use the mansard in a way to be less of a kind of square-blocky building. But no, there's no direct mansards on this street. There's, but there are a lot of sloped roofs, and so we wanted to get somewhere in between those two.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested to hear some comments maybe and then come back, but I'm good for now. Thanks.
Okay. Jim Sears, let's see if we can, if you have any questions or comments. See if we can do this without an echo. Jim, are you there? Yeah, I know, I think he was on a, he's on, he had called in with his phone though.
I could, I could call him if.
Should be the bottom one, Josh, I think, because that's muted still. The second Jim Sears.
Okay.
Oh, oh, you think?
I think so.
If not, I can move on to my questions, but I.
I could call him. Let me just call, let me just call him.
Yeah, see if, yeah, because we want to see if he has any specific questions for the, for the team.
Jim Sears is now exiting.
Yeah, yes. We were wondering if you had any comments so far, Jim?
I do, yes.
Okay.
So I guess start from the beginning. What was the, why is the plan for 16 three-bedrooms? Why did we not consider a mix of ones and twos? Why did we go for the three, all threes? I think this is kind of a, an application of first impression, at least as far as I can remember. Normally, we have a mix. You know, why are we doing, why are we doing all these as three bedrooms? What's the rationale?
So I can, I can tell you the original rationale was that we find that generally speaking.
And again, just to repeat that, just in case people had difficulty hearing from, from home, I think the question was, what was the rationale for the, for all 16 units being three-bedroom versus a mix?
Yeah. And so what we tend to see in projects like this is.
Just mute. You can mute, Josh.
Mostly, mostly two beds, one beds, and a, and a couple of mixed three beds. Or even two beds, one-bed studios, smaller units, more, more profit quickly. And felt like there was not, there was not a lot of three bedrooms in this area being proposed, being built. And so once we initially kind of looked at that, we decided that might be a market that we wanted to adhere to, that try and provide family-sized units led to us kind of emphasizing playground in the, in that area, try and think of this as a family building. And once we did that, it just felt like to, if we made them all three-bedroom, we were better amortizing the investment in playground stuff and roof deck space and treating it like a, a building that would be full of families. So that's the rationale that we started with.
So let's talk about that for a second.
Okay.
Upside, upside. Okay, so the idea is to have 16 families in the three bedrooms. Potentially, if we had, say, a couple with two kids, that's four per unit. That's 64 people. Are there going to be some, you know, parameters? Could we end up with a situation where we have three single people move in and then they end up coupling up and having six people in a unit? Or we have, you know, a couple with three kids, two same-sex, one, you know, different sex? So I'm just worried about the density with the invitation of the 16 three-bedroom units and how that can result in, you know, impacting, you know, the public parking, the existing parking, and the play areas very close to the neighbors. So those are concerns in that area. How do you, how do you deal with that? Are you going to require, you know, are you going to limit the number of adults? Are you going to limit the number of kids? I mean, how are you going to manage that?
I'm trying to think how to respond to Mr. Sears' question without getting into same-sex households and stuff that really has nothing to do with this board. These are three-bedroom units. They are intended to be family-style units, whatever that family makeup happens to be.
I think he was referring to the same bedroom.
Like children.
Two girls in the bedroom, and a boy in the bedroom.
Two boys in the bedroom, one girl in the other bedroom.
He wasn't referring to couples.
No.
Like children sharing rooms.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. I appreciate that, because I was a little shocked. Okay. Well, I guess I still don't know how to answer that. We don't restrict that when we talk about single-family homes. We don't restrict that when we talk about two-bedroom units. We don't restrict that when we talk about a single-bedroom unit. And, oh, are you going to have two kids sleeping on the floor? These are three-bedroom family-style units permitted under the bylaw.
I have a question. Are the parking spaces going to be assigned? That might help clarify, um, because if each unit has two or one, then it won't be like overflowing onto the commercial.
They would be assigned.
Okay. Okay. Other questions, Jim?
So if you're, if you have three single guys move in, and then their significant others move in after, so now you have six adults. You've got one car for that unit, one parking space perhaps, or maybe two. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure the map on the density. Whereas when you've got, when you're offering one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms mix, you can be somewhat comfortable that it doesn't get abused. And it has nothing to do with, you know, I'm just cutting bodies, is what I'm talking about. Cutting, you know, if, if the, the goal is to, you know, fill it up and, you know, we're gonna not really uh, care about who moves in as long as they got the dough to pay the rent, then, you know, I'm just worried about the maximizing the, the space uh, and the effect on the, the density of, of the space. That's, that's, that's a concern. So moving from that, I also just have some concern a little bit about the uh, open amenity space that you're counting. You know, uh, these roof decks. Do we have a fence up there that's gonna prohibit people who are maybe having a good time from wandering off the area into the AC units or the edge of the roof? Uh, are they allowed to stay up there all hours of the day, all hours of the night? This isn't Boston, this is in Cambridge, this is Danvers, and it's a budding a downtown, a neighborhood. So that, that's a concern. Uh, the color of the building, I think it looks like we're in Ireland and maybe Dublin. I think it's a little too dark. Can we maybe do a Festel, lighten it up a bit? You know, to kind of, you don't see really dark, dark buildings like that in, in Danvers. I, I can't think of any. Uh, so those are my, my main concerns, but I'd love to hear from um, the neighbors as well.
Okay.
That's it for the moment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Okay.
Can you just confirm the amount of units allowed before we move on? The 16 is what they're asking for, what's the?
Sure, Attorney McCann, just in terms of the amount of units allowed?
Is it 13?
By special permit?
Uh, yes. Uh, by right is uh, is 11.4, by special permit is 13.7, so we can call that 14. And we are requesting 16.
So 11 by right, 13 by special permit, and you're asking for 16?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Um, I have a number of questions.
Yes.
Okay, so let's sort of begin with, um, I made a bunch of notes here, so we'll see what we can do. When it comes to a question about the parking and in terms of the, uh, and sort of picking up on a, on a question, again, of, of in terms of you may have multiple people living in the, in a unit who may have, who may have a vehicle. And it could even be, you know, family, you might have a, you know, a kid who has a car. So um, I guess a question is in terms of, so the, the units will be, so the parking spaces will be, uh, I think you even said they would, they would be rented, is that right? So someone would pay extra on top of their rent for a space?
They would be assigned. I don't think we've, uh, we've talked about whether you're buying them or, or whatever. They would be assigned though.
Got it. Okay. In terms of the, um, uh, and this is a question also, I, I, I think you mentioned in the application that there is a, a public lot sort of across the way on Essex Street. Do you know if there's a time, if those, if that's a time lot?
It's not.
It is, no, it's uh, within 500 feet. It's the next.
Sure.
Spot over. It is not the bank part, the bank parking lot.
Right.
Is there a time? I don't believe that there is.
There's not.
Okay, got it. Okay. So that would potentially provide overflow if you had someone who is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Um, a question I had though also is in terms of the, um, I have some concerns as well about the, the transparency as well, sort of picking up on the comment that was made earlier about the dentist's office. And, and I was wondering if, if other options were looked to. And the reason I'm thinking of, for example, the CVS in downtown Danvers on Maple Street has these big, large picture windows in the front that are blacked out. I mean, because that, that's, if you go into the store, that's where the, that's where the checker counter is. And so those are typically closed. So I wasn't sure if the, if as far as an architectural perspective, you looked at other options such as larger windows, but during the course of the day, maybe there's plantation shutters inside or something. So at least from the street, it looks more open, but you are, um, you know, and also provides flexibility where let's say 20 years down the road, the dentist's office is, is no longer there and it makes it, without having to, to, to a massive rehab of the whole building, that you could still use them. So somewhere in there is a question. And yeah, so we spent quite a bit of time thinking about this. The reality is, if you, if we were to leave the existing glass storefront on the bank here, uh, this Essex Street elevation doesn't get to 60%. Right. We, we, even if we just touch nothing, we wouldn't get there. So we would have to take some of this face of this building off. And on Elm, uh, uh, on Essex Street, it's even harder because we've got um, four windows. Um, I believe it's 90 feet of length. And so we would have to shut down the dentist's office while we take off the wall. And one of the things that we've, we've been asked a number of times is, can, can we keep the dentist's office intact as it is? So the dentist's office, this is a question having also, you know, uh, having worked in a building once where they were actually building a building directly next door and there's disruption, you know. I mean, is it, is it truly, and again, goodness is more getting to construction sequencing, is it realistic that you would be continuing the dentist's office during the whole time that work is done? Not, probably not during the whole time, but for the majority of it, yes. And that was something that the, the dentist has been adamant that we, we do our best to do is try and keep the office as it is. As Nancy mentioned, probably don't want to see more windows into the dentist's office. Probably don't want to take, definitely don't want to take the roof off of the dentist's office. And that's the, the gist of the height is we're gonna build completely over the top of it. And peel the siding off of the outer face and run structure down as we need to around the perimeter. But to keep the inside face of that intact during the, the construction. Yeah, because I guess the question was, I mean, if ultimately the dentist, if there is going to be a, a cease of operations for a certain point, that's going to be required by either for safety or necessity purpose, then, you know, what additional time is it to potentially carve out some additional windows along the side? I mean, that may mean, does that mean it's, it's, you know, instead of being out of commission for, you know, for six weeks, it's out of commission for seven weeks? No, it, it would be quite significant. If we were to take a, a, a wall of the building off and then have to rebuild it and then rebuild all the things inside of it that were attached to that wall, it, it would be quite significant. I can't speak to that, and unfortunately, Rob isn't here. He's the construction manager. Okay. So again, that's a, that's a concern I have in terms of whether or not, and I understand you said you've looked at, but just having seen other examples where you do see a large window, and again, even, even maybe that window may not be, you can't see through it at any particular point in time, but it's still, you know at least that that, you know, these buildings are gonna be forever, so at least you know that you could have that additional transparency for the future. And to, uh, to that point, uh, when you look on the Elm and Essex Street elevations, we put windows that matching that in every single space we could, including on the garage where you might have translucent windows, you might have them with a, a blind behind them. Sure. Um, so I feel, trying to be sensitive to that. The, the lobby is not a glass box. It is a box that's trying to match this language. Sure. Um, but yeah, we, we definitely tried to, um, we looked at that and then we felt that having one, uh, roughly one-third of it glass and the other third be fairly opaque, and then come around the corner and be opaque with a glass entrance and a glass garage just felt right, was fighting against itself. Okay. Yeah, again, I still, I still have some, some, some concerns and the, and the, the color, you know, I, the color of the, the building and all, I know how it's presented. I know you're working on different color schemes. And perhaps it also comes, I mean, I, I live in a, you know, I live in a yellow house with green shutter, so I'm more of an, on the light side of things, but it's, it's a, um, it just seemed, it does seem awfully, it does seem very, very dark um, to me. And maybe also coming from, I'll, I'll show my age. I remember when it was, it was Danvers Pharmacy and it was white. So it's a, it's a, uh, it definitely, it's, there's a, there's a difference there. One question I did have in terms of the, in terms of the, the mansard, uh, you know, roof. And, you know, even walking, I, I walked over here tonight and I walked past the buil, you know, the building, and you're walking past other buildings that are, you know, the building across the street, I think, is 1839. One down the street is 1849. These are all, you know, Georgian-type colonial buildings. And I was just, I just wanted to just, I wanted to note just in terms of, and this is in our, our zoning, the, the planning board zoning regulations, uh, not the bylaw, but the regulations, and it's like 7.5, 0.4. And it's, it makes a point that, again, this is for new buildings, so I understand this is a, a, you know, an existing but which you're building on top of. But new buildings should be designed to reflect traditional New England village architecture such as Greek revival, Georgian, colonial revival, shingle and stick. The design of buildings within CBZ, you know, character-based zoning districts should capture this varied approach to design while remaining true to historic New England form. Architecture should be varied but compatible in scale. When complete, character-based zoning districts should appear to be a 21st century New England village with roots in traditional New England architectural designs. So I just wanted to just ask in terms of, because, you know, how that, how the mansard design sort of fits in with that. And I appreciate that it's not just a, a flat roof. I know that people have been talking about that, but, so there is a little more of interest to it, but I'm wondering how this fits into our, you know, even our own zoning regulations, which more contemplate a New England village, which seems to have more of the peaked roofs, more Georgian style versus mansard. The only example I can think of mansard is like the Berry Tavern, and that was a 1960s type of a sort of colonialization of the building. So I appreciate the question. One of the things that, as we were, as we've gone through this, when we often look back at the more commercial downtown buildings, if they were mixed-use or even if they were commercial, they tended to be pretty square. Lopped off roof, whether it's two stories or three stories. And when I, when I was looking up and down Elm Street here, I saw a lot of buildings that are commercial now, but may not have been originally. And so, um, they have a, something of a, obviously, a gable roof, a hip roof type expression. Yep. Um, it's hard to pull that off in a large-scale building. It's hard to pull that off on something that's even this wide, much less as wide as what we would need to do on, along Essex Street. And so, um, when faced with that um, idea of, we see a lot of, we see a lot of sloped roof, we see a lot of shingles, how can we fit in with that? Um, the mansard is the, the roof style that tends to give us both that, that color and texture of the surrounding roofs, while also being um, not, not feeling kind of tacked on as a wider gable or a, a series of, of dormers might feel within a, within a gabled or a, um, a, a traditional angled roof. Okay. Yeah, so I understand. I also feel like we, we have been thinking about that quite a bit as we go down Elm Street. Okay. Also, I, Josh, I emailed you some of the other color studies if you want to pull those up, but um, so if I have to say, that's clearly one of the things that we're still not set on. Yeah, I, I think that's it, and I think that might sort of, you know, to me at least, that, that sort of affects sort of the, the, the scope of the building and sort of the, is the, you know, especially like the, the lack of transparency on the first floor. Just that very, the, the dark color, very almost like a, like a hunter green. Again, it just seemed to me to be very, um, it seemed to re-emphasize the, sort of the lack of transparency. So. If you want to pull up, so there's, there's a couple that went, we, where we've gone very much lighter and obviously, that's one of the easiest things in the world to, to change or to work with. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Um, and let's see if there's anything, I, I do want to hear what members of the public have to, their questions or comments as well. And I guess this is just a question in terms of where we stand. This is Attorney McCann. I know that we've had, um, uh, and that we've, there's been a preliminary report from engineering. And so, as well as I think something from electrical as well?
Um, yes, the electric department comments were pretty standard. The engineering department did come with a number of comments. We've been through all of those. We don't have any that we object to, that we say, oh, we're gonna have a problem with that. They were very technical in nature. Add a note here, what size is the pipe there, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Uh, so there are all things that we could address. Um, the response memo, and then that usually goes back and forth a couple of times between our project engineer and the town engineer, but that's where we are there. But um, in looking at the comments that we received, and I've seen a few over the years, and those were, nothing jumped out at it that, that said, oh, we're gonna have a tr, a problem with that. Or they're objecting, they're saying, oh, no, you can't do X, Y, or Z. There was none of that. It was just add notes here or there. So we haven't had a chance to revise the plan or to respond to those comments, but we will, but we don't see a problem with any of them.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Just before I turn things back to the public, do any of members have any further questions or, or comments?
I have one.
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Just to Jim's point, isn't there um, some kind of regulation for the number of unrelated adults that can live in a unit?
Yes, there, there, there are. I, Jim went on to a couple of, Mr. Sears went on to a couple of other points, so I let that kind of go for the moment. But I wanted to circle back to where I started with our, with my initial comment with, with regard to this particular development team. And the vision that they have is to create sustainable, livable space that enhances the quality of life for residents and contributes positively to the community. What Mr. Sears was alluding to was creating a boarding house. That is not the case here. These will be high-quality, high-end residential units. That will be three-bedroom units, but, um, and I, I do object to the comment that was, well, if you can pay the rent, you'll just stuff enough people in here. That wasn't correct. And there's nothing part of, no part of this presentation that would lead one to believe that that's this developer's intent or goal for this project. So there are safeguards in place, definitely. How many unrelated persons you can have living in, in a dwelling, whether it's here, whether it's any other part of town, um, or whether it's a single-family home. Those regulations apply and, and would apply here.
Okay. Cute. Any other questions before?
Okay, until we move on.
Sounds good. Okay, I think we're gonna turn it over to members of the public with questions or comments. I, I saw Mr. Bradstreet with his hand up first, so. So please come on to the podium and introduce yourself and, and please present your, any questions through the chair.
Bill Bradstreet, tell me, do you remember precinct one? I happen to live on Essex Street, just so you know. The comment was made at the parking lot across the street. That's, that's private. It's posted. Vehicles subject to being towed. It's posted by the bank that I think raises a spot there. I'm not saying they can't, I don't know, rent the space out, but it's posted, private property, I believe.
Isn't there an adjacent town, town public lot, that's right, following that? So the long.
That was what I was referring to.
That's the railroad one.
The railroad one, yes.
If you're willing to walk around, that's, that's your business. It says three bedrooms, and again, I think it was talked about. There were some families that might be a husband and wife, and they might have six or eight kids because they like a large family. Do we have a limit on the number of family members in town?
Town staff question?
What, what's the, it was unclear of what the question was.
Question is in terms of a limit, in terms of.
No.
I don't believe, or in terms of.
Same as single.
I think that's a federal.
Same as single family, it's like, yeah.
You're talking about a unit or how many people you could have in your family?
How many people can be, can, how many people could live in a three-bedroom unit?
How large a family can you have?
Yes.
Husband, wife, and offsprings?
I don't think that's a, that's a, not a local government or a federal government. I don't think government gets involved with that.
It's just a question. You're talking about three bedrooms. I know you, you've said about uh, family members, maybe aunts, uncles, grandparents. I'm just wondering if the town has a regulation on how large a family can be? I'm just wondering if the town has a regulation on how large a family can be. I didn't think they did, but I thought it was at least asked.
I'm.
I mean, you can put bunk beds in a bedroom, I suppose, but I was just curious.
I'm not aware of that myself. Attorney McCann, you're shaking your head?
Vigorously. The, the town does not regulate how many children you can have.
Okay.
Thank you. One other question, if the dentist decides after all of this time that he's going to close his businesses and leave, is that office space subject or can it be turned into several offices instead of just that one? I mean, is there enough space? I mean, I'm wondering if the owner of the property might like to maximize his cash return.
Attorney McCann, do you have a response to that in terms of, I guess, is it like the, the adaptive reuse of the, of the?
Sure. Yeah, this is commercial space, and there are many different types of uses that can go in commercial space. Within the downtown area, you have to satisfy parking requirements. And sure, you could have, you could cut it up into two office spaces, but the amount of parking that you need is dictated by the square footage, so you could cut it up into two spaces, it doesn't change the number of parking spaces you need.
And just picking up on the question, is any anticipated use for the, the Bank of America location now?
No, we don't have anticipated use yet.
Okay. Mr. Bradstreet?
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen in the, yes, please go to the mic, yeah. Thank you.
My name is Joe Campbell. I'm in a butter on Elm Street to the proposed project, actually on two sides. And I have two questions. There are no elevations detailed on the drawings that show, if you would, can you pull up the footprint for me?
One moment.
The existing building footprint.
Yeah, Mr. Campbell, you're in the building right directly.
Yes.
Next to it, right?
Yep. Okay, right there, please.
Want to give him the microphone?
Yeah, is there, Attorney McCann, can you pass him the microphone just to, if he wants to pose his question with?
Okay. So this is my property. As you see here, this building was constructed on the lot line. Which was done years ago, grandfathered in, understood. I need to know, or I would like to know, what the elevation of this building is going to be when it's finished? Because we've been here 20 years and I have three tenants. One of them has been here almost 20 years. We, we're concerned about what this is going to look like because right now it's a concrete wall, which we're used to that. But we don't know if there are going to be changes made, and also, could you go back to that screen? Second floor and third floor, which are going to be constructed on the existing building. I heard someone say six foot setback on that roof, so I really want to know how far the construction is going to be set back on that roof.
Okay.
You can't build right to the edge of the building, I wouldn't think.
No, so the, the second and third floor here will be, I think, at the very closest, they're going to be three feet from the edge of the, of that roof.
You don't have to answer that question right now. I'm unconcerned about a detailed elevation.
Eric, it might make sense to just go to the microphone if we're going to do the back and forth. Like, yep, sorry, just for, just for, thank you.
Yes, certainly.
And just picking up on, Mr. Campbell, just a moment, just picking up on what, now in terms of the six foot setback, so I was a little confused as well, so is that?
Well, I, I think what I was pointing to is right at the, the pinch point there in the, that green zone, that's six feet.
I see.
That, that's the setback there, but the portion that he's concerned about talking about right now is a three foot setback.
So the pre-existing non-conforming is remaining as such?
On the first floor.
On the first floor.
And then above that, we pull back three feet from.
Three feet.
It's pull back three feet.
Okay. Okay. So I'd be, I'd like to see a detailed finish elevation of what we're going to be looking at on that side of the building.
Yeah.
And also, somebody mentioned something about an electrical box?
Electrical room in the back corner there.
A room?
Yes.
Okay, an enclosed room.
In the building.
Okay. So obviously you can see my main concerns. We are abutting.
PDA.
On two sides.
Absolutely.
And also another thing I need to be concerned about is construction access to work on this side of the building.
Yeah.
How are you going to do that without entering and performing work on my property?
So I appreciate that, the current plan and the, we actually with Robert Johnson Construction, we have a similar project we're working on in Redding right now, where we have to build portion of the wall right up against the existing. The intent would be potentially to talk to you about having short term access if we want to pretty up that wall, or being able to do our wall from, within our property entirely above that.
Can you show actually the, the elevation from, do you have an elevation from that side?
We do, it's a little bit skewed, all, all the elevations are a little bit skewed, but if you want to flip it through the elevations.
Number four, page 22, number four.
Page 22.
Number four. Yeah. Yeah, right there on the left, so bottom left, I think is the, your elevation.
Right. So this is, this is positing that you, you would let us onto your site to put siding over the existing concrete wall. If that's not acceptable, if that's, if we can't work that out, then you would see the existing.
This is what you're talking about?
Yeah, from there to.
That represents siding?
Yes.
Okay.
Like hardy, hardy panels and AZEC trim.
All right. I think that answers my questions for now. I mean, coordination is going to be.
Of course.
Above most importance because we have tenants and we also run a business out of that building, so.
Absolutely. And like I said, if we can't access it, you're going to, we're going to see that existing concrete wall, it's not the end of the world. But if we can, we'd like to continue that siding around the perimeter, so.
Continue, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other questions, members of the seminary?
Nova Seminary Town meeting member precinct one. I happen to like the Mansard roof very much. I actually really appreciate that the facade on Elm Street is different, that it's not just the same shape over and over and over again. I like the step back where the decks are. I appreciate that it's only three floors and you didn't go the four floors that you could. The trees, I would like to see a few more trees in the playground, just because I think shade is important in a playground, or else it just gets really, I'm sorry, it just gets, I think, just too hot for them, yes, or the parents that are sitting around. Some shade would be nice, even if it's just along the edge of it, not necessarily in the middle, but I think it would be a nice addition. Color wise, I actually think I prefer this one, just as a personal, I like the lighter on the top so that it does not seem looming over, but the dark on the bottom I'm, I'm fine with. I think that's it. I'm excited. I like it. Thanks.
Thank you. You got a question, sir?
Hi, my name is Dan Kirby. I live on Cherry Street, right around the corner. I've got, and I'm a landlord too. I probably own 10 units, not 16, but I have the same concern with the window frontage. I think there's got to be a solution of some sort.
Right.
Especially if that dentist office does move out three years from now. And I guess the, the remaining questions I have is, is for the, for the committee. Like, with all this development going on, why aren't we doing condos? Like, why not?
Why, why, you're asking why aren't we doing?
But like, instead of apartments, like with homeownership, people take pride in homeownership. We're still, we're still getting a tax source in property taxes. I said that. But like, like why isn't the town doing more affordable condos? People take pride in homeownership, people don't take pride in apartments. Like, I can assure you with that, I'm, like I said, I'm a landlord.
Understood, but I think a number of people would disagree with you too, sir.
Well, you can say that, you're not a landlord.
Yeah.
And my, my last statement is about the roof deck.
Go ahead.
You know, obviously the noise concern, is it going to be, you know, are there going to be posted times where they have to be off the roof deck? Who's going to enforce that? And is, are you guys prepared to give other businesses downtown, Berry Tavern, Pub 49, so on and so forth, can they, can, can they get roof decks? Like, are you going to say no to them but say yes to them?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would think a roof deck would be more appropriate downtown on High Street instead of out here where there's residential homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
So those are just a couple of things that popped into my, into my mind.
Okay. I'm going to pose just a question to Attorney McCann just with respect to sort of timing, like use of the roof deck and in terms of any sort of, any sort of restrictions in terms of timing?
Can we ask for order if the audience is too noisy back here?
Okay. Yeah, if, 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 if people can just keep, keep it, if they, if they want to talk, just, just step outside and talk, okay? Be respectful of people who are speaking. Thank you.
This is a very small, as Eric said, a very small open amenity space. It is a particular type of open amenity space that is specifically permitted in the DTC Corps, which is this roof deck idea to give some folks some meeting space, but it's very small, and as Eric pointed out, it's really centered within the middle of the building, it's not along the outsides of the, the space. So we have a couple of other, 17 Elm has a outdoor amenity space on the roof, and that was certainly very well received as just a, a nice amenity, but you can see from here how set back it is from, from the edges of the building. And of course, I, this question came up earlier, will there, will there be safeguards? Well, of course, the building code tells us what we have to put around the roof when you have a roof deck.
I know a question that's asked a number of times, outdoor audio.
And it wasn't asked tonight, but it will probably come up. Outdoor audio, I wouldn't, you could certainly put a condition on, that's certainly within your, your ability to do. But this is a, just residential seating area, no more than you would put an outdoor audio restriction on homes in a single family subdivision. It's, you know, it's one of those things that you could regulate if you so chose. But this is a type of outdoor amenity space that's called out in the bylaw as desirable and appropriate for the downtown area.
Okay.
Lou, can we just?
So I.
Hold on, just a second. Can we just confirm the roof deck is on top of the Mansard roof? Is that accurate? The Mansard roof's not acting as any sort of, like facade to the roof deck, right? The roof deck is then on top of the Mansard roof, and, so you're not showing it in elevation? Is that accurate?
We're not showing it in elevation, the Mansard will come up about 18 inches above, sorry, the Mansard will come up about 18 inches above the roof, the guardrail will be 42 inches above the roof, so you'd see about three feet of the.
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Mr. Kirby, do you have anything further?
Yeah, so just two other points, like, you know, I just have some concerns with this roof deck. You know, the town may allow it, and it's not that I'm against it, I think it's more appropriate downtown. I just, I, I just see like a bunch of high school kids that are living in those apartments, drinking beers all hours of the night, upsetting the neighbors. And then my last question, is there any sort of like elevator that's going to be built?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that leads me to the affordable, the affordable Section 8 apartments, I'm assuming? That a.
No.
Affordable apartments?
Right.
Okay. So, so is there, is there a way that we could possibly get the senior citizens, since there will be elevators and I'm assuming handicap accessible?
Mm-hmm.
You know, could, could we look into the possibility of having those dedicated to senior citizens for potential tenants? Well, I don't know what the process is.
Right.
It's a three bedroom.
Yeah.
I know it's a three bedroom, but I'm asking for the potential tenants for those affordable units.
Attorney McCann?
What's, what's the process for, you know, looking, have senior citizens?
The, the process of filling affordable housing is, is strict, and there's a lottery process, and senior citizens being qualified under that process to occupy a three bedroom, what would be considered a very desirable, affordable family unit, is very unlikely to happen.
Yeah. And you all are going, actually, isn't it true you're going before the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes, to, to discuss the project, we do not need any approvals.
Sure.
From the Affordable Housing folks, but we certainly wanted to bring them up to date on this project and had actually hoped that that would have happened before we came tonight, but their schedule changed.
Sure.
But we, we will be meeting with them as we do with, with any project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Like I said, I just thought it would be a good idea, since there is an elevator, handicap access, it might be a good idea to consider senior citizens for those three units that they're going to be allocated.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Ed Harrison. I live at 61 Elm Street for 40 years, and my parking lot abuts what is now the five Essex Street parking lot. At this particular time, along that brown house that's next to the parking lot, there are full grown trees, they've probably been there 100 years. Along my fence, there's some more full grown trees, is the intent to be taking down all those full grown trees and planting little sticks?
Guess there's a question for the applicant in terms of the, in terms of the trees, like, like the existing.
I'm not a tree hugger, but nobody can see me and I can't see anybody right now when those trees are all grown.
Okay.
And it appears to me with the park, the landscaping area.
Sure.
Along that Essex Street back fence, they're taking all that down?
Okay.
Really?
I could say the, the current plan is to remove the existing trees on the property, and not, some of them are a little bit overgrown, but some of them are healthy.
So then we all look at, I got to look at that building instead of.
But then we will put up, as I said, that green buffer with 13 trees.
I'll be long gone by the time that thing is.
Okay.
Do you have to remove those trees?
I can look.
Any questions through the chair, please? Sorry.
Yeah. Sorry.
My question was to.
Could you, could you state your name while you?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tina Moody, I live over in precinct seven, I believe, on Hobart Street.
Okay.
And so, piggybacking off of your question, do you have to remove those trees? If they're fully grown and we're happy with the trees, do you have to remove those for this construction?
I, without doing a tree survey, I couldn't say. And we could do a tree survey to, to.
Yeah.
Confirm if, if any of those trees are healthy enough to remain.
Okay.
I think as a concern is raised about the, about the existing trees, to the extent you can look at, you know, if not, you know, preserve some of, you know, some of the trees. Is that, Attorney McCann, did you have something to add?
Yes, that's something that we, often seen conditions put on that we, the applicant can look at whether trees can be maintained and work with planning staff to preserve any trees that can remain. Because of course, some of them are not, I have not looked at these trees in detail, I'm not an arborist, but sometimes trees are not in good condition and you want to replace them with better trees, and sometimes construction get, hamper the roots that are there, but we could certainly take a condition that we could work with planning staff to save any trees that could be saved.
Okay.
There's no trees though going in that new area on the site plan, just to confirm. That's the three foot walkway that you said?
Oh, no, I think we're talking, we're talking about this cell here.
I believe the person who just spoke lives to the top right of that image, correct?
That's where the existing trees are.
There's existing trees all in that walkway area, just to the right of where you're, yeah, that whole area, that property line has trees there, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, you can't keep those trees if you're building that building, it's not possible, so. There's no, unless you reduce the size of the building, there's no way with three feet away from the canopy of those trees.
Well, the building ends here.
Oh, that's right.
The building ends here.
That's the parking lot.
Right, oops.
Yeah, you'd lose parking spots though, but.
Didn't mean to get all of those things showing up. I must have touched the screen. Okay, so the building ends here.
Yep.
So, that's something, it's, it's possible, and maybe a condition that we would look at these, and if they could be maintained, we can maintain them. I don't know how to get rid of what I just put up there.
Looks like there's a return error.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, sincere.
So, I do appreciate everything, all the work you, the hard work you did in the construction of, or of the drawing of the architect's stuff, I don't know what, I don't know what the technical name is. So, I've been living in Danvers my entire life, my, my family goes back, all the way back to Rebecca Nurse, she's my grandmother, I'm ten generations back. So, we've been in Danvers for a while. I love Danvers, it's a nice hometown feeling, and putting more buildings, adding more people, takes away from that. So, I do like the footprint, I love everything about it, however, can you just make it like one-story residential on top, instead of two stories? And I do appreciate the three-bedroom units as well, I do like that as well. That was it.
Is that something you want to address?
No. There's a lot that goes into this, and I, and I appreciate your comment about appreciating the design and everything that has gone into this, and part of what goes into it is also a balancing of presenting a project that's not only attractive, but that's also financially viable.
Okay. Questions? I think it was Mr. Levitt was just, has he up first? His name is Ruguchi.
Hi, Noah Levitt, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I just wanted to share a couple of quick thoughts, I'm generally in support of the project, although I appreciate the questions from the planning board, just wanted to address a couple of things regarding the three-bedroom, I think that's fantastic, I think we need more housing for families. I work at a large employer in Danvers, we have many folks who would love to live in Danvers, they have families, they can't do it. So, I think it's important that we build housing that is accessible and affordable to families. I think also, just like broadly, our population has been pretty flat over the past, I don't know the data, but it's, if you look at the data over the last fifteen to twenty years, the population has not exploded, we need housing. So, I think that's just something to keep in mind, that making this more affordable for people to come into our community is better for the vibrancy of downtown, it's better for the long-term growth of our community. Regarding parking, I just sort of wanted, just my thoughts are, it seems like there's ample parking. There's a lot on the other side, there's ample street parking. I have never had trouble finding parking anywhere in Danvers as long as I've lived here, so I just, I know people get concerned about parking, but just looking at this, like, it obviously meets the parking minimums, but beyond that, I think it, I don't really see any concerns there. And then just finally, the roof deck. This whole conversation's kind of annoying me, I'm just gonna be honest. I live in a residential neighborhood, my neighbor is up the street, will have parties with fifty people and shoot off fireworks. Are we gonna go tell them how many people they can have in their backyard? It just seems like we're vilifying renters for no reason. I rented for thirty years before I could buy a house, I was a good tenant, I was a nice person, I think all my neighbors would have agreed. So, I just, I just want to be careful about how we're talking about people who would potentially want to come live in this community. I mean, if, sure, there could be some law drunkards up there, maybe, but I just, it seems a little misguided, and it seems like we're trying to find excuses for why we should keep people out of this town. So, I just wanted to share those comments. Thank you.
Ms. Levitt, thank you. Ms. Ruguchi?
Joanne Ruguchi, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions first, and then I have some comments, if that's okay. I got a little confused with the garage doors for the covered spaces, how many parking spaces will be available through those garage doors for the, for residents?
Why don't you, could you use the microphone, just so people at home can hear?
So, there are forty-one spaces beyond the garage door. Twenty-eight of those are the tandem spaces we were talking about, thirteen of those are single spaces, those are all inside, or under the building, or in the surface lot in the rear.
How many are under the building? How many of the covered are under the building?
Under the building, meaning it's, it's, it's under, it's on the first floor level, it's not underground.
Right, right. Yeah, I was getting a little confused with that.
Exactly. About sixteen of them are under the building, and the rest have some portion of them outside, exposed.
Okay, okay. So, sixteen of, and those will be for residents, and then?
Some of that is for commercial, and some of that is for.
And some is commercial as well.
Yeah, the intention is that the residents are gonna park towards the back, and the front spaces are going to be for the commercial and tenants, or employees.
Okay. That was one of my questions. Bear with me, because I have a ton of notes, because this is a very detailed presentation, which thank you very much for.
There's a lot to absorb, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I know a lot of work, and detail went into this and a lot of thought, so it is very much appreciated. One comment is, I know the, the board had some concerns, I do too, the color, the, it's too dark, it, it's a little too modern, really, for that corner and for that neighborhood. Maybe take a little inspiration from this building, Town Hall. I know Jim said, I'm gonna say a remark to Jim Sears, but he says, "It looks like you're in Dublin." Jim, I lived in Dublin. Dublin is different. Little prettier in Dublin, we need the Georgian doors in, from Dublin. But, so I'd like to see a softening of that building, of, especially the bottom part of it, whether it's the windows, maybe round, make them round, I don't know, I'm not a designer, I'll let you guys kind of work on that, but I, yeah, it's just something about it is just too harsh for that corner, and just doesn't sit right with me. As for the special permit for the, counting the additional street spaces, I have a concern about that, because what will happen, and I know the board and a few other people brought up concerns about if you have, you know, an adult child living in, who can drive, and if there's one or two more, or three cars per unit, where these units are proposed to be so big. I'm afraid that that street parking will become resident parking, which can happen. This is just looking in the future, knowing what's happening. Also, the public parking lot that's across the street, you know, that would probably need to be regulated more than it is now, if that's gonna be given, because just knowing residents can say, "Oh, I can park here." Yes, but that is needed for town business, this building, there's a lot of overflow parking, employees park there. So, that town would need to be regulated a little bit, also. Can I have order in the audience again, please? I'm trying to speak, and people are speaking across, it's very difficult tonight. Thank you.
While someone's speaking, if you can just please.
It's very difficult to concentrate tonight, the audience has been very rude. So, my concern is the town is gonna have to regulate that parking lot more, which is either the meter maid, or the police, so that's a little bit of strain on our police department. My other concern is the roof decks, and it's not because it's a rental, because, it's because there isn't any regulations, it is a budding, a neighborhood very close, this is a proposed larger unit than Seventeen Elm Street, which, you know, potentially, and then if you have children, there is a lot of noise, and then who is gonna regulate it? Even if people are out there after hours, that then falls on residents getting annoyed, it falls upon the police department. That is another strain upon a first responder, where they could be somewhere else, and they have to do a noise complaint. It is a legitimate concern. So, I know it enhances the, the design of the building, but I have real big noise concerns about that, about, and even the individual decks for some of the units, I have concerns about that, too. And one other question, by right for this area, I believe we said it was eleven point four units that they can build?
That's my understanding, yes, that's right.
Okay. All right. So.
And with special permit, I believe it's thirteen.
It's thirteen, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, I would hope the board considers not granting the special permits for the, counting the street parking. I think that counting those parking spaces could detrimentally impact the existing commercial businesses that are already there. I think there's a salon across the street, there's a thrift shop across the street. On Elm Street, I think there's another salon that is right next to the property. And it also impacts residents who might have a guest over their house. There's, there's been no talk of guest spaces for these units, I know for the commercial businesses, but people have guests over, people have parties, so, you know, parking seems a little bit tight with this amount of units and people that will be living there. I also ask that the special permit for the height not be granted. I know it's only ten inches, but I ask, and I'll give it in my explanation at the end, and also, for by right, I don't believe there should, I think this is too big for the neighborhood. I think they should be able to do the eleven units by right, we can't stop it, it's the zoning, but anything additional to that is, is, is way too large. That will help maybe solve some of the parking concerns that the board and others have. And sort of my reasons behind these is the town has painstakingly updated the zoning laws a few years ago. They worked very hard to get these into place in order to manage the density in the, in the towns and the neighborhoods, for not only the new residents that are coming, but also for the current residents. So, I hope the board takes all those reasons into consideration, and maybe we need to reduce this a little bit. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yep. Ms. Silva? I see your hand up, Mr. Bradstreet, as well, just because you spoke already, I wanted to get some folks who haven't spoken yet, already.
Hi, Lisa Silva, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. I live at 26 Charles Street. I live pretty close to the project.
Can you put the microphone down, just to speak up a little?
Yeah, I'm a little short, right?
I can't hear very well, so.
No, it's, thanks. So, I am in favor of this project, I'm thrilled to hear that this project will offer three affordable units. Almost thirty percent of the current Danvers households qualify for affordable housing programs, so this is really meeting a critical need, and I really appreciate it. Like I said, I live in Precinct Seven, which is adjacent to this project. On a personal level, I have not heard anything but support for this project from my neighbors. People get up here a lot and talk about that nobody wants this, there are people that want this. People in my neighborhood are excited, they're looking for ways to welcome these new residents to our town, this project, as well as Maple Square. I think what people really need to realize is that not everybody lives the way that you do. Not everybody has two or three cars in their household. I personally have one car in my household. And there's just a lot of assumptions being made. You know, we heard a lot of things about what was gonna happen with Maple Square, with nearly fifty percent of the project occupied already. There, I drive through that intersection a minimum of two, but sometimes up to six to eight times a day. I have a son at the high school, back and forth all the time. There's been no increased traffic, I've not noticed any increased traffic at all. Our water restrictions have actually been downgraded from a Level Five to a Level Two, so this big talk about it's gonna, you know, overburden our water supply, doesn't seem like that's happening. And when I say fifty percent of the project is occupied, that's about sixty units that is, are currently occupied. And that the schools are not scrambling to meet the needs of an influx of new students. As of today, there have been no students added to Danvers Public Schools from Maple Square Project. This is the reality. So, as we get up here and we talk about all of this stuff, the questions are great. I really appreciate a lot of the questions, I'm actually gonna speak to the three-bedroom units in a second, but I think we really need to understand that there is no data or facts to back up any of these things that people are saying. And we are adding, like I said, critical affordable, affordable housing units, that thirty percent, I want people to think about that, thirty percent of households in Danvers right now would qualify for an affordable housing unit. I also want to speak to the, the four or more unrelated people, so in Massachusetts, a dwelling where four or more unrelated people reside is considered a rooming house, subject to stricter regulations, and there is no reason why the residents of this project would be any less apt to adhere to this law than any other dwelling in town. There's just really a lot of demonization of these projects happening, and it really bothers me, as you can tell. The seven, you know, if seven people are gonna live in there, I'm gonna tell you right now, seven or more-person household is point seven percent of Danvers. The biggest household in Danvers, they're at thirty-five point nine percent, is two-people households. So, that is just something that is not really anything that we need to be concerned about. And just because it's a rental property in a downtown area does not make it any more susceptible to having people that would actually break the law living there. So, that being said, my only comment would be that I would hope that you would consider some two-bedroom units, because one- and two-person households currently make up sixty-two percent of households in Danvers, and three- and four-person households make up thirty percent. So, sixty-two plus thirty is ninety-two, so over-four-people households only make up eight percent of Danvers. So, not really a concern that six or seven people are gonna be living in these units.
So, you're asking that they consider some two-bedroom units?
I would like, I would like to see some two-bedroom units, because if we're assessing the needs of the community, I really do think that two-bedroom units are the biggest need. I do appreciate the family housing, but we, we have single families, we have a lot of single families in Danvers that families can live in. I do like the idea of some three-bedrooms, I just really would love to see a couple two-bedroom units in there. Be great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I've not, kind of, you'll be called on, I'm not.
All right. Good evening. Linda Polkari, 179 Pine Street. I just had a question about the garage coverage part. How high is that?
It's fourteen feet high.
Fourteen feet high, so is that big enough for a plow truck, or a tow truck, or whatever, in case someone broke down in the back parking lot there? How would you get them out?
Similar to any parking garage, we're not tall enough for you to tow, to lift out a car.
Okay.
Car enough to be rolled out.
Okay. And also, I was just wondering about, like, the fire safety aspect of this building, now that it's going to have residents? I'm not sure where to direct.
You can direct her to the chair.
Direct her towards you, sorry.
No worries.
So, now that there will be residents on the residential side there, what if there is an emergency, like a fire? How are they gonna access that area? Are they gonna be able to get through that gentleman left that live there? You know, that's a driveway, so how are they gonna access three stories from the street, which would be the D side of the building? So, the A is the front. So, I'm concerned about the C side of that, where it's occupied, I don't know how.
Let me ask the applicant about, about the fire, because I think there were some, there were some comments from the fire department, so can you?
Yeah.
Can you explain what, because I think there was a little bit of back and forth with the, the fire department?
And we know that they're not gonna enter under that driveway, under the garage area either, so that only leaves two areas of access. So, that's concerning to me.
So, there are, there are a number of issues that are both, that are state code, and that we will deal with, with the local fire department, but generally speaking, we've got access to this entire facade, these, both of these two facades for fire trucks. We don't count this area as, as part of our access, because we can't guarantee that this building will be here forever. However, there are certain, certain standards that have to be adhered to, and it is a fully sprinkled building, there'll be two points of. There will be two points of egress. There will be a fire alarm system, which would interconnected with the city. There, and the two, and the two stairs are here and here, one of which has a direct access to the exterior, the other is through the lobby. Those are standard. I don't want to take any credit for them. In addition, from any point, the truck, the fire trucks have to be able to bring their hose, their 250-foot-long hose, to any point, whether it be coming around this way, or coming around this way, or coming in through the building. We're currently not planning anything coming through the building, but they could certainly do that if they felt that they were safe to do that. But generally speaking, we have to make sure that, that we can bring a fire hose all the way around to the back of the building, at grade, and all the way around to here, at grade. Now, there is a special condition when you have an existing or a zero-lot line building like this, and there's a possibility that they might ask to use this or come across this as a future setback. But right now, we're not planning to tear down that building, otherwise we would actually pull this back three feet to make more access. But there are, there are state standards that we are following, and there are local standards that we will work with the fire department on.
Okay, sure. But I'm just concerned, though, that's a driveway back there, right? Behind?
Here?
Yes, so there will be cars parked there. I mean, what's going to happen?
And we don't, we don't count that as access. The fire department figures out the access, and we show them, okay, this is how far the 250-foot hose is going to get you. This is the back corner of the building, so you can get to.
So just so I can ask a clarifying question, so it seems, so I think what you're saying is the area that is, that has the, the butter there.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was Mr. Campbell's. I think that that, that, that is pretty much a no-go zone for purpose of the.
I don't believe the fire department would consider that part of our access, because it's not on our property.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, well, it's just a concern to me, but, you know. And I just also wanted to echo the chair's comment about a certain design that you were looking for, for the building, and the comment was made that the building was too large to accommodate a certain style roof. So maybe if it were downsized a little bit, then we could blend it in, as the chair had mentioned. He, you know, preferred the look of the building, you know what I mean? Did I say that right?
Yeah, I mean, I was posing a question. I was posing a question in terms of concerns I had, and sort of how this, how the project correlated with the zoning regulations.
Right, right, okay. So that's all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ask a question. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Hi, I'm Kathy Carboni from Precinct 1.
Good evening.
And I have a quick question. Could you tell me what the price points of both of these units will be per month for rent?
I can't. Nancy, do you know?
Nobody knows how much these cost.
I guess the question I have, just in terms of, in terms of the affordable units, what is, how does that work out in terms of the percentage? I know that that's.
It's supposed to be, you know, reasonable housing for Danvers units. A three-bedroom, two-bath unit, I imagine, is very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just curious if they had any, any idea or ballpark figure what they're going to be collecting for rent, and if parking spots will cost money. I'm just curious how these are going to run, price-wise.
Okay.
And who owns the building? That would be great to know that, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Attorney McCann, can you?
I can, I can try to answer some of them.
Sure.
The, the rents are market-based, so this project is going to take time to, to build, to get through the permitting process and all of that. So I really can't speculate on what the, the rents are going to be, because that's market-driven. But I can tell you that affordable units right now, a three-bedroom affordable unit is about $2,300 a month.
And that is the, is that, is that 80%? Or what is the?
It's 80%.
Mm-hmm.
Of the AMI. Yes. Yeah. So that I can tell you, that's ba, that's set by the state, but the market rate units are exactly that, market rate.
Okay. Very good. And I think she asked about the owner of the.
Oh, the property is currently owned by the owner of the property, which is C, C M? I have it here. The owner of the property is C I H M Realty LLC is the current owner of the property.
Okay. I think you had a question, sir. Identify yourself and ask a question or comment.
Thank you, guys. I'm Derek Whittington. I live at 11 Essex Street. You know, very familiar with the property. Anything that happens there is going to affect my life and my property a great deal. I was trying to get comments in as everyone was talking. There's so much to talk about. The, I'll start just what I'm thinking of, that driveway with the woman that was talking about fire access. You couldn't fit a fire truck in that driveway without a car in it, let alone if there's residents. I'm just going to go as it comes to me.
Okay.
The tree line, it has a great tree line. If you guys take that down, you're doing a disservice to the entire neighborhood. It provides a lot of shade, privacy to the, what would that be, nine? You know, you're right on top of nine. You're going to see into 11's backyard, you're going to see into my backyard, you know, all the way down the block. The, you're going to, if they take that tree line down, everyone's backyard just become open air. However many people there are going to be, 48 bedrooms, people go into their cars looking right through your backyard. The street parking, assigning street parking, it already gets tight, as is. The dentist uses parking spots there, the bank uses parking spots there.
And it's for the commercial. It's, my understanding is for the, the street parking would be, just to clarify, street parking is for the commercial tenants, is that correct?
Yes, and the speak, and street parking is not ours, and it is not reserved, and it's not going to be labeled or restricted. It is the way it is now. It is public parking.
Right.
What the bylaw allows us to do is to count, for purposes of meeting parking requirements, we can count parking spaces along our frontage. But we don't restrict them. They are still public parking spaces. They will continue to be public parking spaces.
Thank you.
So the commercial places take them, the residents and the resident guests just start parking further down Essex Street, further up Elm Street, you know, you're kind of, that's the point I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
Another point I think is important, as far as the, you know, they called, they couldn't give a price point on the apartments, but they called them high-end. So who wants to guess at what we call a high-end apartment in today's market? That's going to be four and a half grand, you know, four grand, four and a half grand. That's a lot of money. Which, you know, is good or bad. Who knows? There's only two single-family homes on Essex Street. There's four two-families, and there's three multifamilies just on Essex Street. The number of bedrooms, this is just me, I don't go in people's houses, I don't, you know, I know my neighbors a little bit. We're, we're essentially doubling the bedrooms of Essex Street with this building, probably more. There's more bedrooms now, if this is done, in this one building than all Essex Street. You know, I think, the parking gets tight already. The bank, their snow removal service is kind of awful. I'll also say the town's snow removal service is kind of awful. They build the, you know, banks across the sidewalks. You end up walking in the street, you know. I've talked to the snow removal service at the bank and asked them, don't block the sidewalks. Those dudes don't care about, they want to plow the snow and get out of there, you know? So, you know, let me, if you give me a moment, I'll just try to think of some more things.
Sure.
You know, it, it's important to me. I'm, I'm what, two properties over, three properties over?
Mm-hmm.
Another thing, who says, it's easy to say, oh, there's, there's a housing problem, build more, build more, that's the answer. But some people say that the Airbnbs is a huge reason why, that there's not affordable rents. So can anyone tell me if there's Airbnbs operating on Essex Street? Nobody can, right?
Item.
So who says that these don't just become Airbnbs? You know? The, the other gentleman said homeowners care about properties, renters care less about property, hotel guests care even less about properties. That's just a point. A property next to mine, 13, expanded. I was against it, of course. Same thing, jamming in the parking. There's not enough parking, as is, so they back up onto my property, park in the street, you know, start their garbage cans, which is small. You know, I know I sound like, you know, like a douche. They put their garbage cans in front of my house, which is a little thing, but it's still, you know? It, it's, it's a hotel, and it's a rental, so they don't care. I think homeownership is important. People take pride. You hold up, you know? That's, that's my opinion. Homeownership's important. Apartment building? I'm not for apartment buildings. You know, I'm sure there's a lot more that I remember, but I'm just kind of, I was watching online, you know, and.
Okay.
I think another thing, general, and I invite all you guys, you can comment and say what you want as I speak. It might be better if we could hold order while people are talking, that the crowd can like add in also. Because people would be talking, and I would have points.
Right.
And then now it's like, damn, I forgot my point.
I know, but that's why we, any comments have to be directed to the chair, that's why.
All right.
Bring a notepad.
Yep, yep. And if I think of any more, I'm going to try to get a second round.
All right, sir. Very good. Ms. King? And I see Lauren Steves had her hand up, too. And then Mr. Bradstreet.
Hi, I'm Carla King, Precinct 8, a town meeting member, as well as on the board for the Housing Authority, and chair, current chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm thrilled also to hear that there's three affordable units. I'm not as thrilled to hear that they're at 80%. I would like to see a lower percent. I don't feel like 80% is affordable. I do think that the figure for a three-bedroom at $2,300 is not correct for 80%. If it is, and I'm wrong, then I think that's, that's, that would be affordable for a three-bedroom.
Sure.
But I don't think that's right, and I would like to see something lower than 80% affordability. And that's always been my issue. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Ms. Steves? Yep. And then Mr. Bradstreet after.
Good evening. Lauren Steves, town meeting member, Precinct 3. First, I have a question in regarding setback zoning, when it comes before planning and when it goes before ZBA, and what the difference is, and when.
All right. I know the answer, but Josh, you want to?
So.
Because, because where we are.
Yeah, so.
In the process?
No, geographically.
Do you mean?
So, geography. So because this project is in the downtown zoning, anything related to any request or relief that's required, that's needed or required, requested or needed, goes to the planning board. But if you were, for instance, in the example that you brought up, if someone needed a sideyard setback variance that was not downtown, or any of the four character-based zoning districts, unlike, you know, this is in the Danvers downtown core, then that request or relief would be asked at the zoning board of appeals.
Gotcha. So is it only the downtown character-based zoning that comes before planning board for?
For all, including for the, for the setback issue, yeah.
Okay, and then anyone outside of the downtown character would go in front of the ZBA?
Right, if you're in like, you know, zone residential one, residential two, residential three.
Yep.
Got it.
If you were asking for a sideyard, or, or any variance.
Any variance, okay.
It would be with the zoning board of.
You'd have to go to zoning board of appeals, and then potentially, if it was a site plane review, you'd have to go to planning board for that.
Gotcha. Good to know. I have a little bit of an issue with the project narrative, where it says the site area is 24,864 square feet, which permits 13 units by special permit. A waiver is requested to allow a total of 16 residential units. I didn't know until I was sitting here and you asked, by right, what are they allowed? Because by right, they're allowed 11.5 units, not the 13.5 that they made it appear to seem in this project narrative. It's not listed in this project narrative. 11.5 isn't listed anywhere. So they're actually requesting an additional five units, not an additional three units, as it appears in this project narrative.
Well, it's my understanding that it's 11 by right, a special permit is, would be 13. They can request via special permit, and then a waiver for the additional three on top.
Right, but they don't have the special permit yet, correct?
No, they have not.
Okay. So it just, it makes it seem like they, they already have the 13 units. That's the way this narrative like reads to me, because I had no idea that it was 11.5 by right, reading this narrative.
Yeah.
And so, I just had a few other thoughts that I wanted to share that I had written down.
Sure, go ahead, yeah.
I appreciate that the project includes affordable housing and green space. Those are important components, and I want to recognize the effort. However, those benefits do not automatically justify overriding our zoning standards. We're not, you know, trading 20 trees for two extra units, especially in a part of town already experiencing significant development pressure. The zoning bylaw allows 11.5 units by right. That number wasn't chosen arbitrarily. It reflects a deliberate balance between housing growth, infrastructure capacity, and like everyone has said, the years of, of work, of hard work that has gone under the thoughtful zoning that the town has spent their time on. Granting a special permit to exceed the limit would, should require clear compelling reason that benefits the broader community, not simply the developer. I, I don't see a hardship that has been demonstrated for the need for the additional units over what they're allowed by right. There is nothing about the site's shape, soil, topography that makes 11 units unworkable. This is a choice by the developer to maximize yield, not a necessity imposed by the land. A special permit is not meant to accommodate financial preference. It's meant to solve problems that the zoning cannot reasonably account for, and I don't think the threshold has been met. They're requesting a six-foot setback where 15 feet is required. The side of the existing building, zero setback is as justification, but we need, we need to be careful. I understand it's a non-conforming, building that's already there, and that's part of the reason that they're probably not going to tear it down, is because they know they have that non-conforming setback right now. The zero-foot setback exists because the building predates modern zoning. That makes it legally non-conforming, a situation grandfathered in, but not a precedent to justify continued non-compliance. Our current zoning laws reflect today's values and needs, respect for neighboring properties, privacy, safety, quality of life. Using pre-zoning conditions to justify further reductions weakens those standards for everyone. Our downtown is under immense pressure, development's booming, and we're seeing real impacts on traffic, infrastructure, parking. If we keep approving special permits at increased density beyond what's allowed per our zoning, we're effectively rewriting the zoning code one project at a time without public debate or long-term vision. So like, my question would be, what precedent are we setting by allowing the excess density that our zoning doesn't permit by right? So those are my thoughts.
Okay. I did have a question, just for Attorney McCann, just based on one of the things you, you raised, just in terms of, she was mentioning in terms of, in terms of hardship and such. So I want to know what is, you know, just to explain, what is, what do you require to show in terms of for special permit, as well as for waiver? Well, you already explained about special permit. You walked through the criteria.
That's right.
But the, but for a waiver.
A waiver does not have a hardship requirement associated with it. It's a discretionary that this board has to look at a situation, and we can request a waiver. It is the lowest bar for type of relief. Special permit is a use or a density that is in fact permitted, but it is permitted by special permit process, which means we have to go through this hearing process, and we have to meet the special permit requirements. And one of the special permit requirements under the bylaw is that we provide a public benefit improvement, and one of those items is the additional affordable housing unit, which we've, which we've done here. So a special permit use is not a use that's not permitted. It is in fact a use that is permitted, but it is permitted through a process, and that's what we're going through. And the waiver, again, is, is just a discretionary. When the board looks at this situation, they can see, yes, it makes sense to allow the dentist's office to stay at the height that it is, that you can give a waiver. that you can give a waiver for ten inches.
Mm-hmm.
That's just within your, your discretion to do. When, uh, the speaker mentioned hardship, hardship has no place in, in this discussion. The zoning relief that were sought doesn't involve hardship, that's a variance, uh, request. That's a variance request made to the Board of Appeals, and for a variance, which is the highest bar, you need soil condition, shape, or topography specific to the lot, uh, that justifies the issuance of a variance. We're not talking about variances here. We're talking about a special permit, which is a permitted use, meeting criterias, which we believe we meet, and waivers, which are just discretionary, uh, as long as there is, uh, some sort of discussion with regard to benefit and as-
Public interest, isn't it?
Public interest, public benefit, as it relates to keeping, for example, the ten inches, to keep the, the dental offices, uh, existing, that existing building, and to allow us to work with that existing building. Yeah, it's not a historic building, it's nineteen fifties, but we want to work with that and, and build above, rather than, uh, demolishing, uh, the building.
Okay, thank you.
And I did want to clarify, uh, just one thing that, uh, Carla King brought up. Uh, she questioned the, uh, the rental, uh, figure that I gave her, and I did show this to her. I pulled this off the state's website today.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the affordable housing, uh, rent for a three-bedroom unit is twenty-three seventy-one.
Okay, got it. And that's at the eighty percent?
It's at eighty percent.
Okay, there you go. Okay.
That's statewide though?
Please don't.
Um, no, it is not statewide. This is based on Danvers, which happens to be in the Boston District.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradstreet, you have a question? Thank you.
Again, Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. As I stated before, I live on Essex Street. I'm aware of the way the sun goes in the morning to the afternoon. If this building is constructed, does this mean that the house that's next door might be a good part of the day in darkness or shade because the sun doesn't reach it? Is that a concern if you go out to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Well, it would be through us, but I guess the question, um, I guess the question's been asked for the, um, the applicant in terms of the, sort of the shadows and such of the, of the building, is there any-
I would hate to see that the house is in shadows most of the time.
I know we've had some discussion about buildings in shadows lately, so if, if there's anything you can add to that.
Yeah, I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I tell you that we have not done a shadow study on the project because it is within all of the setbacks, and other than the ten inches within the, um, height, in fact, a story shorter than the height.
Mm-hmm.
So, and I'm, I mean this just kind of as fact, this could be four stories and still would not have a setback or shadow violation in any way. So, we haven't done a shadow study, it just, there is a possibility that in an urban setting, at certain points of the day, some of the shadow, and this is going to fall on some of the neighboring properties, um, but it's a story shorter than it could be, and twenty feet, um, from this corner and twenty feet from that corner.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. Any further, um, questions or comments, Ms. Graham? That's okay. Take a break if we need to, but-
Hi, I'm Ellen Graham. I live on sixty-one Lyndle. I live in a mansard house, and I love it.
Okay.
So there are some around. Um, I had questions about the water mitigation and the traffic mitigation. Can you explain how that works? Like-
I'm gonna ask the applicant to, it's her, it's her application.
I'll try to explain that.
Thank you.
The traffic mitigation, a transportation mitigation fee, is in the zoning regulations. It is paid based on three dollars per square foot of net new construction.
Net new square?
Did I get that right?
Yep.
Yeah, net new construction, and so that's almost eighty thousand dollars, seventy-eight thousand and change for this particular project. It will go into a fund that is held by Planning Department, I believe, um, to be used at the discretion of the Planning Department, with probably input from Traffic Advisory Committee, et cetera. Uh, but there is a fund, which, given the number of projects that have come around, yeah, there's probably a good amount of money in there.
Right, and we can use that on traffic things around town, basically. That's, that's the idea, right?
Particularly, particularly downtown.
Yeah, and is it approved by town meeting, or does it go, does planning manage it?
I believe it's town.
It's like, well, it comes through the Planning Department Office, and I think, and then what was the question?
Is it at discretion?
Well, I think we would seek input from obviously the Planning Board and other, you know, folks in town who are interested. We haven't allocated any, we haven't, none of the money is-
The allocation doesn't go to town meeting?
No.
No.
No, so the allocation goes through Planning Board, and the Planning Department makes that decision, basically.
We, no decisions haven't been made yet, we haven't actually spent the money yet, so we're still trying to-
Haven't had it that long, is that what?
No, it just went, the downtown zoning from twenty-twenty, when it was approved, and then only once we started receiving development projects.
So all these developments that everybody, we do get some money back for the traffic that we're all concerned about,
Yes.
To help mitigate the traffic, that's the idea, right?
Exactly.
So we do have some compensation for that.
That was baked into it.
Right, and the water, is that the same thing?
The water's a different issue and more town, it's a town, town-wide thing, but I guess Attorney McCan wants to take that one.
It, uh, the water use mitigation fee is the result of litigation that the town of Danvers had against the DEP decades ago, and part of that settlement was a water use mitigation fee that is placed on, um, any new chain, or change of use. New, new water usage. It can be a change of use, you go from a, uh, you go from a, uh, accounting office to, um, a coffee shop, there's going to be a change in water usage. And the Water Department determines how much water you're going to use, uh, in that change of use, uh, per day, and then there is a formula for a one-time payment based on the gallons per day times nine dollars, I think, or something like that. Um, so that's-
And who gets to spend that money? Yeah.
Well, that, that money is held by the, uh, DPW Department, not the Planning Department, and it goes towards, um, it was originally set up, uh, as far as the, um, settlement. It was set up to allow the town to put in, um, uh, water-saving toilets, and allowing residents to get money from the town to do water-saving, um, utilities.
Appliances, maybe.
And so that's kind of what it was for, but it's also, I think, used for other things through the DPW Department, but that's where that, that goes.
Basically around water, so.
It's supposed to, yeah, it's, the fee is based on, exactly on the water usage increase for the property. So you get credit for what historically has been going on on the site, and then whatever increase. So there will be a significant water use mitigation payment associated with this project. It's called the WOMP fee, lovingly by those of us who know it, and it goes into a, a, a fund.
So the town does get some money from, yes, the developers, for both water and traffic?
And I, and I must mention, significant money for the, uh, building permit fee.
Okay.
Also that will go to the town.
Okay, so, um, I, I, I think it's important for us to clarify that these are private, privately-owned properties. Somebody was asking why isn't it condos versus apartments, which is specifically up to the person who owns the property. Um, we have a lot of properties in town that need development, redevelopment, some new usages. I mean, our downtown area really needs the help, so, though there are some tweaking with this project, I think, I like the idea of the project, and I love the affordable housing piece that we're gonna get three.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's not really affordable, because they don't make it affordable, but I will say, what did you say, how many people in town? Sorry, through you.
Yes.
Thirty percent of households.
Thirty percent of households have an income that would allow them to benefit from the affordable housing. I don't think people realize it, I think there's a, a bad connotation of who gets, or who is available to have affordable housing. My daughter, out of college, I had her go and apply for affordable housing in all the surrounding communities she wanted to. She got seventeen hundred dollars in the South Boston, with a concierge, with a brand-new apartment, the dog, and an under, underground, um, parking. A lot of people would qualify for the affordable housing. Those college kids who want to come home and live with their parents could very well get some affordable housing and not be with their parents. So I, I think it's important for people to understand that, though it's not as affordable as it could be, or should be, um, it's really important for us to get those affordable housings, whenever we can. And I appreciate all the mitigation money we get as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments before we have things come back to the board? Ms. Nastick? Yes? Yes.
Karen Nastick, fifteen Locksley Road, forty-year resident. Um, one question I-
Now I bring the microphone down just a little bit, just so we can hear you better.
Shrimp again. Thank you, thank you. When you put things on the agenda, that's all, that's one reason, one way we get to know what's happening in town, because we don't have the newspaper anymore. Can I ask, you know, this, this is a very popular location, because it's, you don't know it by its street name, but you know it because it's over Bank of America, it's over the dental office. If you had said that in the agendas, it would be easier to find. So just try to make your, where, where the thing is that you're discussing when you publish the agendas.
But, but actually, but in terms of the agenda, I mean, there's a legal requirement in terms of we, we provide the, the address, and so, I'm just-
And the map and parcel.
What's that?
And the map and parcel.
And the map and parcel, so I, I think it's a little, I think it would be difficult, and again, just to, you know, to, I, I understand, I mean, it's, you know, to say, okay, this is near Murphy's or the old Danvers Pharmacy, you know? I just think that, you know, in terms of, in terms of agenda items, I think you, you need to use the address.
I'm not saying don't use the address. I'm saying make it understandable to the people who live here by, by, by saying, so a person can skim and know if it pertains to them or not.
I hear what you're saying.
Add the information beyond what's required. Two, um, have, do we have any Danvers buildings with parking underground that we have any experience with?
Can you address the underground parking? I think I s-
Underground, um-
Parking underneath the, underneath housing.
I am not aware of any. I have been involved in projects that proposed it, and then found out how difficult it is to do, and how costly it is to do. This is not parking under.
Mm-hmm.
We do have situ, underground. This is not parking underground. We do have this type of parking, um, elsewhere in town. I can think of specifically, um, it's called Sophie. Over off of Route One has parking
How do you?
Under in this way, and there are a couple of others i- in town, but not, you know, they, where you actually go in and go underground, it ends up being too expensive.
Okay.
So we do have some, some that work like this?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a problem. I just didn't know if it was a problem or not, so.
I think she indicated there's, it's a very, it's, it's very, it's expensive.
Yes, I got that. Um, the dental office, so the dental office's mandate is changing the height of the building because they want to keep, we want to build above the height of that, and that's going to make the extra ten inches be higher than it has to be. Right?
You're asking, are you-
I'm just summarizing.
Me, I'm not the applicant, so I'm kind of-
I'm just summarizing.
Okay.
So, in addition to being asked to make the building higher, also, a large percentage of the parking is going to be piggyback?
Tandem parking.
Really inconvenient to park piggyback and communicate with your sharer the times you get to leave the house. I think the project has gotten real far in light of the fact that you're budding up two sides of this poor guy who is right against this building, but all this work has been done, and it's because, and there's piggyback parking, you're putting, um, a giant place in a surround of every, every other building around it. Has a little peaked roof, a little nice house, and it's just too much in that area. It needs, don't bother with the third story. We've, you've put, how many already in Maple Square, a hundred and thirty? And another thirty in the, over the, I, I think it's a hundred and seventy apartments down between the, the two that have already come up? Now they're adding, now you're adding sixteen more here. You don't need to add that many store, add, drop it a story. I, I think it's too big there, and you've got a five-corner walking intersection, it's a little difficult in front of the town hall. Nobody knows, you just have to make sure everybody's clear before you sort of put your foot in there. I'm worried about the, the light, the, how dark, you lose, you lose the ability to visi, to, um, see people in the street with another big, with a big building that we're not used to. Um, I think that the roof deck is setting a bad precedent to allow the roof deck here, and anybody else who wants a roof deck in town is gonna want a roof deck, if they have access to it. I think it's a bad idea, especially looking at the peop, looking at the, the little houses all around it, to say, a person is going to feel the ownership on a setback deck, that there's fifty people that can hear your voice at ten o'clock at night? I just think it's a really irresponsible idea for having a big overlooking building, looking down on them and feeling that they have any responsibility to the families that they don't know. I guess. I'm just really disappointed that, that this big building is being proposed. It should be shorter. I've always thought that it, one and a half, one floor underneath, one and a half foot above, one and a half floors above is all Danvers needs. You've already put a giant, a giant condominium, a giant complex, apartment complex, Maple Square. You're, I guess, moving ahead with Danvers Hardware Store, and I, I don't think you need to do, and I've often, do you, how many apartment buildings are there in Danvers already? Thirty?
I can't answer that question.
I mean, I-
Just make your comment.
Driving around and taking note of how many apartments, buildings there are in Danvers, and it's, it's a lot. I don't, I don't understand the mentality that's pushing this so hard. One more thing that I noticed is I looked at this last big survey that we had, which was two thousand seventeen, and ninety-five percent of the people in two thousand and seventeen loved living in Danvers. That's an incredible rate, and then if pressed to, well, what would you have us do? Because you didn't know what the results were gonna be, so the results were, well, we could use some nicer stores downtown. That was not revitalize the downtown. That was not a mandate to do this, to turn the town upside down, and build, 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 crazy. Everybody's complaining about the parking, I mean, not parking, but the, the traffic in town. How, I know, it, it's like four light cycles to get up past Rebecca Nurse's house, to get across Holton Street. It's, and, and I just don't think you should allow the dental office to change the flooring on that, to, to make it a three-story building. Just drop it to a two, one down, one and a half above, and just downsize the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further comments before we come back to the, or questions before we come back to the board?
I'll be quick, one more time.
Okay, can you announce your, could you state your name again for the record?
Yeah, Derek Whittington at eleven Essex Street.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, uh, the five-way stop right in front of us is a nightmare, I'm sure you guys go through it. Uh, we as a people, we can't get through it without honking at each other and cursing at each other. That's just gonna get worse with all, all of us. Uh, the tandem parking spots, when they are moving their cars, how are they gonna, they're gonna have to back up, out, probably out on the Essex Street, let the person in, and then drive back in. You know, the piggyback spots, if the person who's blocked in has to get out, I'm just trying to bring that up, of how that's gonna work. And another thing, we are, uh, they're talking eighty thousand dollars, like eighty thousand dollars is gonna get us for the, uh, you know, whatever it was, the traffic.
Yeah.
Eighty thousand dollars is gonna get us like a traffic light and a couple stop signs. Let's be realistic what things cost nowadays, so. And, um, you know, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's come on back to the, um, to the board. Josh, where do we stand in terms of engineering comments and those, and those sort of things we have right now?
Um, so it was just the memo that was in the packet, the development team-
So it was just the memo that was in the packet, the development team has it in hand. I believe that we're just, we were just awaiting a response, you know?
Right, so we're not quite-
They did just get it last, you know, last week. I think it was just, I mean, where we sat, the development team would, you know, send a revised plan set and response memo, kind of, you know, we do with every project, but they just got it last week, so.
Right, so we're not quite ready in terms of-
Sure, yeah.
In terms of, in terms of engineering.
Yeah, in terms of, yeah, in terms of that memo being, you know, satisfied.
Okay. Let me come back to the board in terms of further comments or questions. I know we heard a lot from the residents, so Jean, anything you wanted to add, or?
There was a comment that we should push for more one-bedroom and two-bedroom. I think that that would increase the parking requirement, so not sure how great of an idea that was, even though it is nice to have a mix. It seems like there are a lot of projects that have two bedrooms and one bedroom, so maybe we do need the three bedrooms. I did have one question on the parking, the full parking spots. Can you explain why there's like a shaded-out rectangle between full seven and full eight? Is like that low hanging or something, that you can't fit a car there? Yeah, yeah.
Accessible zone.
Oh, okay.
These two spaces are bad accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the inaccessible.
Commercial space is required to have one, so we placed it so that it could-
And then, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So would those two spaces be marked as handicap?
At least one of them will have a handicap marker in front of it. Maybe it could potentially work.
Okay.
Don't they though, with those handicap accessible spots, have to have an accessible route to the entrance, which they don't have with those locations?
They have to be located as close as possible to the entrance to the building. I was actually looking at this probably for the same reason, you're thinking like, shouldn't this be slid down here?
Yeah.
We could move this here and have just one space, and it'd be like legitimately directly adjacent to that, or we could put a door here. But I do think we should probably slide that down along the spot.
Yeah, I think they have to have accessible access to that main entry without going through the drive aisle, if I recall.
No, they can look at the drive aisles, although it's flat, but it's, you try and minimize it. Yes.
Jean, anything further?
I know there are a number of, like, semi-requests. How should we go about, like, asking if those are going to be conditions, or?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, just in terms of where I'm sitting right now, since I know we have engineering, we're waiting, you know, we haven't had the full sort of back and forth we see in terms of engineering yet. I would be, you know, in terms of, I would, and considering also the special permit might be, you know, anything, I think that the site could be affect, you know, could affect the special permit and such, so I think they kind of go together. So I would, I would be interested in sort of seeing a, seeing them come, seeing the applicant maybe, you know, come back and looking at some of the, the, some of the concerns that, that we have.
Okay.
You know? Is that?
My thought, I'd certainly like to hear the comments from the board and see where we stay on, stand on a few things. However, the engineering department comments are strictly related to site plan review.
Yep.
And really, we have two separate applications, two separate processes. We have the special permit waiver application, and then we have the site plan approval.
Right.
And they're really separate. We're here, we're hearing them together and submitted them together, but you could act on the special permits and the waivers tonight, if you wished, separately from the site plan approval. And then we come back to deal with the engineering department comments and some of the site plan-related kind of questions that we heard tonight. One of the things that I've been taking my notes tonight, as I always do, is talking about the color, talking about the transparencies and things like that. We can talk about that tonight, but those kind, that's part of the transparency is part of the special permit.
Right.
But the other site plan issues, they're two separate things. You could, if you are comfortable, bifurcate and do the special permit and the waivers, and then we come back and we talk about the site plan if, once we talk, finish up the engineering department comments. We can do it that way if the board is comfortable doing that.
Isn't it, isn't it, the concern I have, and I don't want to speak for my fellow members, but the concern I have is that if, let's say, coming back on some of the site plan-related issues, and also the whole, the transparency, that's not, that's part of the-
Yes.
That was part of the, that's not, that was part of the waiver.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm just being, I'm concerned that if you, if there is a, if there is a, some sort of change to the old, you know, to the plan set, to overall change, then we've approved a special permit that might end up being changed, even just theoretically.
Yeah.
So.
Could happen, although what I saw in the engineering, engineering department comments, those comments are not going to change the site plan.
I know, but I wouldn't be, I myself wouldn't be comfortable voting on it with-
The site plan without engineering department comments, although the board has done that in the past, but I understand that. We haven't even submitted our response, so I get that. That item, site plan review and the engineering department comments would have to be continued.
Yeah.
The question is whether we're far enough along for the board to be comfortable on the special permits and the waivers, and that's up, that really is up to you.
Yeah.
You can bifurcate the project, is my point, but you may not be ready to do that. And I, again, as I said when I stood up, I wanted to hear the comments, because I don't know if you're far enough along. There may be some, some questions that we have to answer.
Okay.
Not to interrupt, if we wanted my, if you wanted, had a, if you had a couple more, because Jim, Jim does have, Jim would like to speak again.
Sure.
But, you want Jim?
Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Hold on.
Okay.
That's a long phone call, if you're still on the phone.
He's not home. There he is. Hey, Jim.
I told you I wouldn't forget you.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to kill the reverb here, hold on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Have him turn off his audio or mute.
If you could just turn off your audio, or mute your audio, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're there. Close.
All right, Jim, go ahead.
Jim, you have the floor.
Microphone's on the bottom.
Jim?
Yes.
You could, you could speak.
Jim?
Yeah. Are you good now?
It's getting a reverb.
You might just turn off your audio, just, you gotta turn your audio off, Jim. And then we're fine, I think.
Turn off his speakers and his muties.
Your speaker.
Yeah, if you have a headset, that's better, is a better.
Yeah, I turned off my-
Careful, you're on a live mic.
All right.
Do you want to type?
If you can maybe type, if you can type the question in the chat, maybe, if that's-
Okay, I'll type it.
All right, why don't we?
All right, we'll circle back.
We're going to circle back.
What's that?
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right, Jim, I'm going to hang up, just send me the comments through the chat.
I guess, just like, what are we trying to, are we going to, I don't have any specific comments, I guess we're voting for the special permit stuff, are we going to do each one? Are we going to?
I myself, just in terms of where I'm standing, I am, in terms of comfort level, I think there's enough comments and there are some potential questions here. I would not, myself, feel comfortable bifurcating them and rather, rather continuing both, and any sort of comments or questions could, you know, could be addressed. In particular, I think we have some issues in terms of even just questions that we have in terms of the, you know, in terms of the transparency, the, even just stuff like the color of the building. So along with just even the, even if everything was perfect, I would just, I would, because we, I don't think we're quite ready for the site plan approval in terms of, at least to my view, in terms of having the back and forth with engineering. I'm just concerned that if, let's say, there was an issue with, with something that affected, it could potentially affect, it could be intertwined with the special permit or the waiver. So that's why I would, I would feel more comfortable having it, having everything addressed altogether. I mean, that's, that's consistent with what we've done with some other projects in terms of, like Chick-fil-A. We had them come back, but that's, that's my, that's my view.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that, because I guess my comment was just that there's some of the special permits I don't have an issue with, there's some of the things that we've done in the past, but then there's other ones, such as the transparency for me, that just make the building feel super-heavy and just, I think there's some concerns with that. So I, I don't think I need to go into depth on any more of that right now, but I'd like to hear what Jim has to say.
Yeah, and I have a few, I have some, I have a few sort of questions as well as, you know, some substantive comments as well, so. But Jim, does, did Jim-
You do, you, you speak your comments and then-
Okay.
He's trying to type.
That's fine, okay. So a couple of things, and just in terms of sort of takeaways, in terms of hearing some of the comments, I am, I do have a question about the, sort of the building transparency. If there's any, if there's something you can relook at it, again, just without a concern if there is, you know, you know, and I understand that a lot of it was sort of the dental office, you want to have everything, you want a consistency with, I know with, but, and the dental office seems to be driving it, which I get it, but that's, but if there's a, an alternative to look at as well, that, like I, you know, like I mentioned, there was, you know, you have a CVS which has a, which has glass, but it's not, but it's opaque, or there's a certain something that you can still, maybe you're still at the same transparency per se, but it's, but at least it allows for, you know, you know, this building's going to be here a long time. So, so that's a, that's a concern I have. I do have, in terms of the, I know we talked about sort of the, looking at the trees, and again, anything that can be done with respect to, you know, taking a look at sort of the trees, to the extent any of that sort of natural, you know, barriers, lack of, is not really the best word, but any sort of, you know, delineation between the-
Buffer, buffer.
Buffer, thank you. It's late. So buffer in terms of that, I think that would be, that would be helpful as well. The, in terms of the affordable unit, I'm definitely very, I am, I am happy that you all are, in terms of looking, this is more in terms of comments, I'm happy that this is, that you're, that you're proposing at the outset, an additional affordable unit. So I think that is a good thing, and I know that, you know, and as I think was, one of the comments was mentioned earlier, I mean, this is, you know, you know, we're also looking at, you know, I think there's always a concern, you know, I think there's a concern about people, you know, coming from out of town and such, but this also, I think potentially, the affordable unit, that also helps people, that helps people's kids, that helps people who may be downsizing. So I am, I am supportive of that. And in terms of renters, I've been a renter before, you know, I've been a renter and I was a, I was a good tenant. You know, I, you know, I've been a renter before and someone, you know, said, I'm not a, I'm not a landlord. Well, I'm not, but my dad was a landlord, and my grandfather was a landlord, you know? My grandfather came from Greece and he ran a grocery store and he, and he owned a couple of houses, you know, so that's something, you know, you know, two, three family houses, you know, and that's, and so that's, you know, so I understand that, but I think just to do a broad brush is really, is not accurate and it's unfair. So, and again, just, you know, so, and going back to the, you know, and going back again just to the, to the construction itself and the, in the building, again, I'd be interested in seeing a little bit more on the, on transparency, as well as I'm interested in hearing as well. Again, just looking at that section of the zoning bylaw I brought up, I think it was 7.2.4. Again, just, I understand talking about some of, you know, and I know there's for and against on mansard roofs. Again, I would, I would appreciate just a second look in terms of just the other sort of building, you know, you know, roof types and all, even if it's a matter that, you know, just it would make me feel better about, about the project again, because I'm looking at not just, it's not just personal preference, it's also looking at consistency with the, sort of the overall zoning regulation. So, that's, so I, so those are some of the, those are some of the high points, so. I might have a couple more, because I-
If it's okay to read Jim's comment.
Please, please read Jim's comments, yeah.
So Jim wrote, "I'm not ready to vote yet. I believe the project is too dense and no justification for the waiver, 12 units max. The intent of the waiver was for the Maple Street properties and High Street that did not have large parking lots attached to it. We counted the street parking spaces for Danvers Hardware due to the very limited parking." So, that was the comment.
So his comment is not ready to vote on it, and the concern about the-
He has concerns, it seems like, for, right, for the waiver request for the density. And it looks like from the parking.
And parking as well. Okay. Got it. Okay. Any further, anything further? We heard from Jim, I said a few things. Jean, did you have anything further you wanted to add?
No, just like reiterating, I was looking again at the landscaping and that outdoor space that butts against 7 Essex Street, that, it looks like that's where all of the existing mature trees are, and you're proposing to put in all new, not mature trees, so maybe if any of those could stay, that would be really helpful and go a long way with the neighbors. And then, again, one of my first comments was the redoing the sidewalks on both Essex and Elm Street. And then, if there's any way to eliminate the synthetic turf and just continue whatever is along that three-foot strip down into that area, that would-
Half of Esther Street sidewalk was just done recently.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. And the only, one thing I was going to, I was going to ask as well, and again, this is just, again, appreciating the additional affordable unit, but understanding as well that you are, and again, this is a, you know, I'm just, I'm posing the question in terms of, because of a concern in terms of density and such, and because of the waiver and the special permits request, and I understand you're adding an additional affordable unit to what's already, to what's, what's required. Would you, and again, you don't have to answer this now, but would you be willing to consider an additional affordable unit as well? So for a total of, so rather than the three affordable units, there'd be four. Again, that's just something, as I'm thinking in my mind, looking at the, the fact that it is a, it's a, it's a fair ask in terms of the, in terms of special permit and waiver, and so looking at what is being provided in terms of public, you know, good to the public.
Lou, can you just confirm if the extra affordable unit is for the special permit or for the waiver?
There's sort of both, there's sort of, like, it's like both.
It's part of the special, I believe it's for the special permit, isn't that correct?
For the special permit, we don't need to provide a public benefit improvement-
For the waiver?
For a waiver.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
But it's all part of, it's all part of the package.
Yeah, so that's kind of how I view it.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I was saying it's part of the package, I was just, again, you don't have to answer it now, but I'm saying if that's something, unless you're willing to answer now.
I am certainly not willing to answer that now. That is a huge ask. Huge, to ask for another unit.
There was a request to lower below 80% too, so I don't know if-
Again, these are things to-
Consider.
You know, to keep in, you know, to, for your consideration and to come back with.
I don't have an answer for, for that now, although I will say that it is a huge ask on top of some of these, the other things that we've added in and some of the other payments and, and things that we're hearing. So I will ta, you know, I will take that back, obviously, to my client. But if we, I just want to get a good feel if, in fact, we're, we're not going to bifurcate this process and we, we have some items, I want to make sure I have them all, but I also want to get a good feeling for, for where the board stands. for, for where the board stands on, on some of these items, because as we have to go forward with the, the site plan, back and forth with the engineering department, that's an additional expense, we have to understand if we have a project, let's just be honest.
Sure.
So we have the special permit and waiver for, for the density at, at 16 units. I've just heard the request, could there be another unit? But I've heard the comments about that, but where do we stand on that generally? Meeting the needs of the downtown, is that generally something that we're hearing is, is a good thing?
Mm-hmm. Okay, do you want to do?
I, I just am wondering where we're standing on, on that.
Personally, I'm okay with it, especially given that there are three family, or, yeah, three bedroom units, sorry.
Mike?
I would say on that special permit, I don't, I.
We're back to the board comment, okay, just, just.
I would just like to say, she has her own personal microphone, why can't I have my own personal microphone?
Well, okay, we're back to the board comment, so.
I'm just making that, you know, point for people to notice. The attorney has her own microphone, that she's had the entire meeting.
Okay.
And the residents have had to share a microphone and get your permission to speak. I think five waivers is a huge ask.
Thank you.
Everyone seems like affordable housing is very important. Obviously, it's not important to them.
We're back to the board, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the board.
Sorry.
Does not make you think that this is about.
Sir, you're out of order. You're out of order.
Yeah.
Okay? You are. Mike?
I think that's, that, that special permit, I kind of am on the fence about right now, to be honest.
Which one?
The, the dense, the special permit about the 16 units and the, sorry, waiver for 16 units and special permit for 13, am I remembering my numbers correctly? I think that's one right now that I'm on the fence about, to be honest. I, I don't think I fall on the definitely no or definitely yes. I'm definitely think the housing's important and I appreciate the affordability of it. I think right now it feels a little dense, but I think there's probably some other issues that are stemming to my feelings on that. So, again, I, I don't think I'm a hard no or a hard yes on it, but I do think that's something that I am on the fence about.
And myself, I tend to be more, I'm, I'm, I'm tending to be more on the, on the, on the yes, not to, you know, but I'm also, at the same time, I also am cognizant of the, of the public comments and, and what the neighbors are, are feeling as well, so I think that's why I'm also asking about any additional sort of public benefit. So, I mean, I myself, I think that, that housing, particularly the affordable piece, is important. I think this type of, of housing is, I think is ultimately good for the community, but I do, but again, I, that's why, you know, that, that additional, you know, ask was not said lightly.
In lieu, a comment on that, like, I, I don't think it's a comment we need to discuss right now, but I do think it'd be important to talk about that as a board, about public improvements. I think affordability is wonderful, I think it's fantastic, but I also think that it benefits the one person who wins the lottery to get that affordability, and so, yes, it's a public realm improvement, but it's not really for the entire town, so I don't know Josh and planning board, how we do this, but it would be good to investigate different things, like, I'm not saying a playground's the number one thing, it only benefits kids, but like, it'd be interesting to talk about other options, just as a town, I think it, yeah, go ahead.
It's late, but there, there are, there are a list of, there are.
Yeah, I, I read them.
Oh, okay.
I read, as I was sitting here, I read them. So there's the benches and stuff that Attorney McKinnon mentioned, so I think the affordability is better than that, but I do think it ends up benefiting one family.
Sure.
So, just a comment, but, sorry, I know it's not really what we need to talk about right now. At 10:16.
Thank you, I'm just looking for, make sure we have everything covered for the next time.
Sure.
That we come, I'm not hearing, assuming that we address the transparency issue and the color issue, lightening up that, that building look and, and we, we can provide some additional information on that. I am not hearing objection to the other special permits or waivers. The trees, we'll look at whether we can save some of those trees, we'll also look at, can we take some shrubs out and put some more trees in, make that switch? But aside from that, I am not hearing other objections to the other.
Design, I would just look, that's not special, but the design in terms of just, as I mentioned, that, that part of the zoning regulations.
Right, we can provide that, that additional information to you, but as far as the, the waivers or the other special permits, I don't think I'm hearing objection to those, provided we respond to the comments, that basically transparency, some of the architecture ideas.
And I guess there's a concern, I mean, and I guess any concerns that we've had, I think, you know, that we've had some, those, you know, some of us have expressed some concerns about with the, the density.
Right, no, I understand that that's, that, that special permit seems to be the, this is typical, the, the one that we questioned, and you've put a, a request out there as to what we can do, and I will certainly go back to the development team, so.
Lou, can we just confirm what the other ones were real quick, just to make sure we all agree that we're okay with those other ones?
Mind doing that, yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Just quickly.
So we have the, the special permit and waiver on the density. The special permit to allow us to count.
Yeah, the parking spots.
Some parking spaces along the street, not reserve them, not sign them, simply count them. Transparency.
Yeah.
The six-foot setback.
There's, there's two side, yeah, there's two side yard setbacks, there's a six and then the 13.9.
Yes, the, the six, and it's along that side, we had the, the plans up where with the existing building is zero, the new is going to be step back six or 13.
Six and then 13, so, so it's a side yard setback essentially, but it's a special permit. So it's two special permits related to the, the design in terms of the ground, the ground floor transparency and then the two side yards.
Okay.
And then the waivers are 10 inches on the height.
Yeah.
And 13 trees rather than 23 trees in the park, in the playground, and our reasons for that is we want to have playground equipment and sitting areas, but maybe, having heard the comments, number one, maybe we can certainly accept a condition that we would work with planning staff to see if some trees could be saved.
Right.
But also, can we look at the, the landscaping that has been proposed? Maybe some of the shrubs, while numerous, maybe we could do a tree instead of a shrub and that kind of thing. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just, just for informational purposes, we did have a member who was absent tonight. He does have the ability to watch the video and do Mullins, so just in terms of, you know, the board comments and questions, if Tim attends the next meeting, he can participate in the hearing, so.
And it would be three of five instead of three of four, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right, because that's, that's what the special permit and waivers would require under this downtown zoning.
It would always, right, it would always require the three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, just for the, for everyone.
Okay, so Attorney McKinnon, do you have enough information in terms of, and both in terms of what information that we need as well as sort of where we are sort of falling, is that?
I think I do, just, if you could give me just one moment?
Sure.
I think we do have our direction, so we would ask for a continuance to your next meeting, which I believe is June 10.
Okay. Okay. Very good. So there's a request to our, for a continuance to our next meeting of June 10. How is our, the agenda looking for the?
It would, it's fairly open, so.
Okay, very good. And so we would need to, I need to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing?
Yep, yep, for the special permit and site plan.
So moved.
Yeah, I think what you probably want to say.
Yeah, sorry.
Do you mind saying?
Sorry.
Yes, I make a motion that we continue the 83 Elm Street and 5 Essex Street public hearing to our next meeting, June 10, 2025.
Second.
Okay, very good, a motion's been made, made by Jean and seconded by Mike. Okay, so we're going to call for a roll call vote.
He fell asleep.
Roll call vote on the motion to, to continue.
Are you, uh?
Sears.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mike DeCulless?
Yes.
Jean Hartnett?
Yes.
Lou George?
Thank you.
Yes, okay. So the motion to continue has, so it has been continued to our next meeting of June 10. And what else do we have, Josh, in terms of anything, anything further? I know it's a, it's a late night and thank you for.
Not at this time, no.
Thank you, members of the board and thank you for members of the public.
I just want to thank you for giving us time this evening.
Absolutely, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn has been made by Mike.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, calling roll. Mike DeCulless?
Aye.
Jean Hartnett?
Aye.
Jim Sears?
Hold on.
We got to call him.
Lou George, yes. We are adjourned.
Yes, three out of five, good.
Jim, do you, motion to adjourn, you're, yes? Thank you, all right, four to zero, thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.